Oh my God, look how quiet they got.
Do you have an extra pen?
You guys don't have microphones in front of you. Why do you get so quiet? I'm with you. Charlie needs one.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have him read. He's just gonna read what he's been doing. What I was going to read.
I got it.
If I have everyone here for the first hearing, can I start that one early?
You can take up your other business.
Figured I'd ask before doing it and then get in trouble later for doing it. It's gonna be recorded, so everyone can file something later. You're just here for me, aren't you?
Um, yes. Course you could tell me that it being 7:15, you called the hearing to order.
Alright. Sorry.
I don't think there's anything wrong with me. I think there's a false alarm. I'm good, but they knocked the shit out of me in the hospital and they knocked the shit out of me in rehab. So that when I die, I'd say, "I must be screwed up."
Okay, yeah, and everybody has a copy of that, so. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mark.
Nope.
Oh no.
Nope, she'll be here after April 8th, I understand.
Are you town council?
It's okay.
Where in the mix did you want it? Where in the mix?
At the end.
The very end?
Yep. You're leaving, um, the note you sent for hearing room. Your opinion on the first one. The first one. The variance.
The first issue.
First issue.
On Lancaster Street.
And she feels... I'm starting. Alright. So, my clock does say it is 7:15. I am calling the zoning board of appeals for West Boylston's meeting. Current members Dave Femia, Mark Clark, Charlie Wickes, Raj Kumar, and John Benson as our vice chair. First item on our agenda. We've... We are gonna discuss some other business that the ZBA has to attend. Our second item will start at 7:30. And then we will have our final public hearing at 7:45. There is a room downstairs. There will be time for public comment. It will not be taken from the audience. You will stand, you will say your name and your address once public comment has opened. Okay. So... Approvals for minutes?
I didn't see anything.
So our February 25th meeting. Minutes? Has everyone had a chance to overlook them? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the February 25th, 2016, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Toby? Minutes for February are approved. Are there other... Paperwork? You do? Can you? You can take a chair. You don't have to sit on the floor, so take a chair, please. And bring it over to where you are. So that... Yeah. Is there any financial statements or updates?
Yeah, we have a... This is the financial statement.
Now, are there any bills or outstanding invoices outside of that? Okay. What would it be in one of these accounts?
It should be.
Here's the financial... Oh, there's the financial statement. Depends on how bad though this was. What is the end date on this?
This is from January. No, February 29th.
Oh, alright, so it should have... Eight thousand deposit.
Let's see. Alright, so let's follow up with an email. Follow up with him. Mr. Miko. And copy me on that. Okay, and I'll give that back to you. Is there anything else?
My ideas were, um, I made copies for everybody. I didn't know if we were going to discuss it. Those, um, the different forms that Karen Parry sent. For the petitions, and we were going to review those.
Yep, so... Has everyone had a chance to... There were a packet of forms sent out that need to be updated for the ZBA. Has anyone had a chance to review those?
Can we put it on next meeting?
Yep. But no, you haven't? Alright, so can you add this to the agenda for our meeting in April?
Okay.
And at that time, everyone will have a chance to look over it. Did you ever receive a response about the fees?
No. No, he hasn't written back.
So does he have copies here for all of us?
Can you ask, um, town council what she's seen for fees? If she's seen any difference from towns. I don't know if she has, but it might be worth it.
Okay, fine. Should I pass these out, though, so people have them, or should we?
Yeah.
I'll keep the one on top for the file.
Was there anything additional submitted for any of the public hearings?
We need another copy. Toby, we need another copy. What is this I'm looking at?
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll give you this one.
No, let's, uh, let's hold off on accepting notes at those... At this point, let's put that, um... We'll have, um, after the meeting, you can hand those out. Let's keep that off for now. Please go. Thank you, though, for all of that paperwork. Sir, you can take a seat at this table. Just don't talk into the mic for me. Alright. I'd say take, we have a few minutes before the 7:30 hearing, so if you wanna take a few minutes to review the paperwork that you have, let me know if you're missing anything. Toby, for the documents, can you add that to the, as an agenda item for... Yep? If everyone can have those, if you have adjustments or reviews of those documents prior, if you can email them to me for me to review and consolidate, that would be great.
Is that yours behind you?
Yes.
Hold on, let's take that for a minute. Is that this packet here? Yep. Toby? This packet in front of me? Has this been provided to all parties? Okay. This one here's not stamped, nor does it have a name. Yeah. No. Where was this left? Is this emailed?
In my mailbox. Yeah, that was in my mailbox.
You don't wanna read it? I won't read it.
Yeah, they never brought it there because I didn't have the name. But I think I scanned that and sent it...
I, I received it via email, but I...
Yeah, and I said that they...
That's fine.
Anonymous.
Thank you, sir. Yep.
Do we have this?
I think we do.
There we have this, right?
We do. Without the signature. Does everyone have one? Toby, do you have one for yours?
Have you guys cured that as well, just on time?
Alright. Three minutes before... In reading, just mention the attachments and what they are. Everybody's waiting in suspense. Is this our originals? Yep, these have to stay in our records. Those are originals. She's signed them in... Can someone show me their packet? Everyone show their packet and tell me if you have individual signs or your copies. Do you have a copy of this in our, in our record?
Mine doesn't have a signature on it.
Yeah. This isn't, so I can't... No, this, this should stay with you. This is its original.
They all seem to be signed as originals.
So you don't have a signature?
No. Hold on.
Is it all together, or did you just open it? Okay, so yours is together. Can I see yours? Did you have a rubber band around it?
No, I took it off because I was reading it.
Raj? That packet on the bottom with the rubber band around it, can I see the top page of it? Okay. Thank you. I have one that doesn't. Alright, 7:30. Lost my agenda under the 12 pounds of paperwork I have. The next item on our agenda is the public, the continued public hearing. Say the last name.
Pasqual.
Pasqual.
Yes.
En Pasqual Cadeau. Pension for a variance on 393 and 395 Lancaster Street, and I'm sorry for the way I pronounced that, if that was totally horrible. And I'm looking at you, so are you all... You're the lawyer representing, so could you just state your name again?
Certainly. George Curtsey, I represent the Pasqual family, members of the Pasqual family relative to their application for a variance for 393, 395 Lancaster Street here in West Boylston. I'm an attorney from West Boylston, and last month, we were here before the board, Madam Chair, relative to this application. Since that time, the board requested a supplemental memorandum explaining why we were here. I know the board sought counsel from town council relative to the, um, the status, the legal status of the, of the application. I'm happy to readdress. I did not bring my projector and my slides again, but I know I did supplement them. I don't know that I had to go into great detail. I know you have a full house and you have a, gonna have a, looks like a long night tonight, so I'm happy just to, uh, tell you what we're looking for. We're looking for a variance, dimensional variance for, uh, 393 Lancaster Street, frontage to be 81.5 feet and area to be .38 acres. And on 395 Lancaster Street, area of .49 acres with a minimum frontage of 90.5 feet. And those are consistent with the original plans back in 1960. I'm happy to address any issues. I know the board's received an opinion letter from council. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them. There are no other increases in non-conformity. So that's the reason why those are the, that's the limit of our variance applications.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
No. Charlie? Have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Never happened. So, at this point, I'll open it up for public comment. It's not a surprise. I'll give it a minute in case anyone from downstairs wants to come up and comment. We have, we have another room this evening.
Oh, I saw that.
And sit down. You don't, you're... I think they're all here for a different matter. But, um, no one wants to comment on this?
What is the explanation? I mean, what was the memo? Well, that's my comment, you asked.
Would you read it? Losing my voice.
Was that sent to the planning board?
Sorry, we're just, we're haggling you because we know you received it. Would you read off the, um... Yes, what, what the reason why they're looking for it?
You want me to read what?
Just this. Just the, um, the explanations.
Uh, this was from town council. For the reasons explained below, I agree that the applicant should seek a variance. A case with a similar fact, patent cited for applicant's attorney is instructive. In Pelletts versus ZBA of Tinsbury, 470 Mass., 795, 2015, the Supreme Judicial Court addressed a situation in which a division of land, which is improved by existing structures, could be divided under an exception of the subdivision control law that does not appear to apply to the case before the board. However, the court in Pelletts held that the division of land into separate lots did not automatically render the lots or the existing structures on those lots grandfathered under general law, Chapter 40A, Section 6. Nor did the recording of the subdivision plan excuse the lots and structures from having to comply with covering zoning requirements. In reaching this conclusion, the court referred to prior cases holding that the recording of a plan allows the plan to be recorded, but does, but has no bearing on compliance with the zoning bylaws.
Thank you.
Sounds good that it should be granted, or?
I, I, I'm, I agree with that, that, that one.
We're gonna be done haggling. We're not haggling anymore, I'm sorry.
That's how to get the print and, and record the...
Because it wasn't done. It's not on the original 1960 A&R, so they, they're requesting this, so... No one else for public comment? I'm gonna close. Public comment. Public comment's closed. Does anyone have any discussion or questions on this? Only none? Are you... Does anyone wanna?
Make a motion that we approve the variance.
Okay, so we need the wording for that. So...
Madam Chair, if I may, I took the liberty of doing perhaps a, a draft notice... Madam Chair, if I may, I took the liberty of doing perhaps a draft notice of decision, just as a, you know.
A well-prepared lawyer?
If you, if you're well, you know, you're, we'll get it, not the vote, but it's the rationale and the, and the findings that the board would make to support that, and a grant of the variance as petitioned.
Toby, can I have a vote sheet? I'm sorry, I know you're writing.
Board of Appeals of Town of West Boylston hereby certifies that a variance has been granted to Mary Ann Dura, Vincent N. Pasqual, Michael A. Pasqual, Paul J. Pasqual, Sharon A. Pasqual Cadeau, affecting the rights of the owner with respect to land or buildings on 393 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, Mass. and 395 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, Mass. Specifically, the board grants a variance from the dimensional requirements of the West Boylston zoning bylaws as follows. A, as to 393 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, the minimum lot size shall be .38 acres and the minimum frontage will be 81.50 feet. B, as to 395 Lancaster Street, West Boylston, the minimum lot size will be .49 acres and the minimum frontage will be 90.5 feet.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, the variance as what I just read.
As just read?
As just read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I said aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. You will review this?
I'll review that, and, and I know there's gonna be an appeal period and we'll be able to make sure, I'll talk to Toby, we'll get that.
Okay, and you'll get the, the paperwork?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Have a nice evening. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna make copies, I need to read it again. All right. You all have six minutes.
Do you want?
Oh. If anybody hasn't signed in upstairs or downstairs, please sign in on the right-hand side. There's some papers right near this, on the table. Is there, Toby? There was a, there was a lawyer out in the hallway. Yeah, do you wanna, I think he's here for this hearing? If you have a, well, do you wanna just go grab him? That already just showed up here to attend the meeting?
Yes.
Oh, you just, you know what, we need you on, we need the paperbacks, we need to write it here before then you can have the rest of them sign it.
What paper do you need?
You don't wanna do some more meetings? One more week.
Four. Four more weeks? I'll do four more weeks. Four weeks. You know what, I'll throw you a fifth week.
I say four more meetings and I find out next month that you're gone after one.
Now I wouldn't.
Just brought two of our people.
Nancy? Nancy? I have a chair right here for you. I wanna make sure the camera. You're welcome. I do this stuff, be there.
What is she's gonna use? This. She's a petitioner. Pat's a petitioner. In line, these are the one I would prefer. These people have incredible stories. Yeah, Pat's a petitioner.
Many people here.
You're not talking to each other?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Yeah, those are just from the.
We'll get past. Was he, is he here for this one? Yes. Okay.
Other petitions, and you know, a lot of people willing to speak.
I'm gonna go with that. We'll ask him.
So, I don't know, I mean, I have.
Where? Is there anybody in the hallway? I just keep hearing an echo. Are there a few people in the hall?
They're coming in.
They're coming in? If you guys wanna come in and. Is there any open seats? I have 7:45. Public hearing of Bellotti, administrative appeal of the decision of the interim building inspector and zoning enforcement officer regarding 241 and 251 Laurel Street property owner Wayne Armstrong. Armstrong?
Armstrong.
Okay.
Okay, please bear with me, I have a few things that I have to read, okay?
Um, I've asked, so there were a few statements I was gonna open up and read off, losing my voice, so in an effort to keep that, I'm gonna have him read them for me.
Okay, notice of public hearing, zoning board of appeals, West Boylston, Massachusetts. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the West Boylston Town Office's 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. on Thursday, March 24, 2016, at 7:45 PM to act on the petition of George Bellotta, Lauren Griffin Burns, Jessica Franger, Patrick McGreal, Timothy C. O'Brien, Mary Ellen Davis, Richard, Rich Wall, and John Sullivan, individually on behalf of concerned citizens of West Boylston for the administrative appeal of decision of the interim building commissioners zoning enforcement officer to deny the request for an order concerning the property at 241 and 251 Laurel Street, West Boylston, Mass. to stop a gunfire range on this property. The court record title of this property stands in the name of Armstrong Realty Trust, Wayne Armstrong, trustee, 241 Laurel Street, West Boylston, Mass. Copies of the petition are unfilled in the office of the town clerk, 140 Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. The petition, request for an administrative appeal. George Bellotta, Lauren Griffin Burns, Jessica Franger, Patrick McGreal, Timothy C. O'Brien, Mary Ellen Davis, Rich Wall, and John Sullivan, individually on behalf of concerned citizens of West Boylston, who appealed building commissioner zoning enforcement officer Christopher Lund's, Mr. Lund, January 30, 2016, denial of a request cease and desist order concerning the gunfire range uses, uses at 241 Laurel Street that are in violation of West Boylston zoning bylaws. Petitioners seek enforcement of all applicable bylaws, including but not limited to those set forth in CCWB's January 12, 2016 submission to Mr. Lund, to cease the gunfire range uses at 241 Laurel Street that are in violation of the bylaws. These uses also violate the conditions of the board of appeals special permit approve, approval date dated 10, 10/20/93 relative to the home occupants, occupant, occupation business permit issued at Wayne, to Wayne Armstrong at 251 Laurel Street for the operation of his gun repair and selling business, as well as violate the bylaws governing home occupation permits, including but not limited to those referred, referenced in CCWB's January 12, 2016 submission to Mr. Lund. Petitioners also request that the ZBA enforce the July 31, 2015 cease and desist order issued by Mr. Lund to Mr. Armstrong, see attached Exhibit 1 Form G, which ordered Mr. Armstrong to cease and desist the outdoor commercial recreation uses in a single residence, residence district at the gunfire range at 241 Laurel Street, which were in violation of the bylaws. Petitioners request that the ZBA clarify that the July 31, 2015 order precludes any use of the gunfire range at 241 Laurel Street by past or present customers or prospective customers of Mr. Armstrong's gun selling and repair business, and precludes any use of the range related to Mr. Armstrong's home occupation as set forth in CCWB's January 12, 2016 submission to Mr. Lund, who, who has declined to so interpret and enforce his July 31, 2015 order. Petitioners request that the ZBA impose restrictions on the use of the gunfire range at 241 Laurel Street to ensure that such uses are customarily incidental to the primary use of the property as a single-family residential property. Specifically, petitioners request that the ZBA impose the following restrictions on Mr. Armstrong's use of the gunfire range at 241 Laurel Street. One, the use of the gunfire range must return to the quiet, unobstructive, and respectful use that existed prior to enactment of the bylaws and issuance of the home occupants see special permit on 10/20/93. Two, the use of the following weaponry be prohibited by any non-owner of the property. I, military-style weapons, semi-automatic weapons, semi-automatic weapons or assault weapons capable of rapid firing, explosive targets or other binary explosive devices, high-caliber weapons, simulated automatic weapons or bumpfire stocks, and NFA weapons. The landowner, number three, the landowner, Mr. Armstrong, be required to be present to supervise all shooting on the property. Four, the number of persons present on the property shoot at any given time may not exceed four people. Five, shooting be restricted on the property to limited periods of time and hours. And six, no guest shooting be allowed on the property on Sundays. Petitioners respectfully request that the ZBA grant them the foregoing relief and all other relief it deems necessary, just and appropriate. Okay, on July 31, 2015, this was a letter that was, came from Mr. Lund. It said, it referenced the firing range at 241 Laurel Street in West Boylston. According to the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, the above listed is the trustee of this property. The following condition has been revealed as being in violation with the town zoning bylaws. Conditions reported would constitute a violation, an outdoor commercial recreation use in a single residence district. Town of West Boylston zoning bylaw as amended May 19, 2014, 3.2C4. A record search of the Worcester Registry of Deeds revealed no use variance required, recorded for the firearms range present on the property. Its use is not customarily incidental to the primary use of the property, therefore, with the authority granted by the Town of West Boylston zoning bylaw 6.1, I am hereby ordering you, the trustee of record for this property, to stop the above cited violation immediately. If you wish to pursue a variance for the use, please follow the application process necessary for a public hearing on such a matter. If you or any party is aggrieved by this order, you may request a hearing to appeal. All requests for hearings must be submitted as outlined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 143, Section 100. You or your agents have the right to inspect and request copies of any records pertaining to this matter. If you have any questions regarding this matter, you can contact me at the Town Offices at 140 Worcester Street, at the Office of the Department of Inspection, or by phone at 774-261-4031. Your prompt attention to this issue is appreciated. Very respectfully, Chris Lund. Then on 1/30/2016, concerned citizens of West Boylston care of Mr. George Bellotta, this was another email that, another letter that was sent out by Chris to Mr. Bellotta, and requested cease and desist at 241 Laurel Street. Mr. Bellotta, I wanted to thank you for your meeting we had and the new material presented regarding the firing range. Presently, there is an order dated 7/31/2015, which is the last thing I just read, enacted against 241 Laurel Street to stop any activity resembling an outdoor commercial recreation use in a single residence district. That order was not appealed by the parcel owner and is established. Our office has added the new packet you represented dated 1/12/2016 to our files at 241 Laurel Street. Currently, this office does not have written consensus of a majority of abutters or abutters to abutters of the parcel in question to your requests since the old 7/31/2015 order prompting enforcement, nor does this office hold any significant evidence of any activity at the range since the old 7/31/2015 order constituting a violation prompting enforcement, nor does this office have any written consensus by the citizens of West Boylston to request on a level of significance prompting enforcement. Based on these factors, this office is not compelled to add a second order of similar standing nor take action to enforce the current order. Please continue to bring any perceived violation to our attention. If you are aggrieved by this letter, you may request a hearing to appeal. All requests for hearings related to the zoning board appeals must, zoning bylaws must be submitted as outlined in Massachusetts Chapter, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8. And that's from Chris Lund, okay? This is an appeal filed by a group of eight residents, George Bellotta, Lauren Griffin Burns, Jessica Franger, Patrick McGreal, Timothy O'Brien, Ellen, Mary Ellen Davis, Rich Wall, John Sullivan, collectively identified as concerned citizens of West Boylston who are appealing a decision issued by the former building inspector, Chris Lund, regarding the property located at 241 and 251 Laurel Street owned by Wayne and Mary Armstrong, Armstrong, either individually or as a trustee. The property at 241 Laurel Street contains a residential dwelling and a gun range. The property at 251 Laurel Street consists of a dwelling and a separate building that houses a home occupation permit, permitted pursuant to a special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals in 1993. The home occupation is the repair and sale of guns and gun-related items. Both properties are located in the single-family residence zone district. In a later dated 12, January 12, 2016, the concerned citizens of West Boylston requested that the former building inspector issue a cease and desist order to Wayne Armstrong to prevent the further illegal operation of a gun range at 241 Laurel Street. By a letter dated January 20, 30, 2016, the former building inspector reminded the concerned citizens of West Boylston that cease and desist order prohibiting the use of the range for an outdoor commercial recreation was issued to Mr. Wayne Armstrong on July 31, 2015, and having received no appeal, that cease and desist order remains in effect. The former building inspector also denied the concerned citizens of West Boylston's request that a further cease and desist order be issued to Mr. Wayne Armstrong on the basis that, one, the gun range is a commercial recreation use that is prohibited in a single residence, residential zoning district, and the concerned citizens of West Boylston assert that the gun range on the adjoining property is related to or supports the home occupation, and the gun range is therefore used in a commercial nature, even if no fee is charged for the use of the range. Two, the operation of a gun range club by Mr. Armstrong is a forbidden use under the town zoning bylaws and is not a permissible non-conforming use, arguing that Mr. Armstrong operates his range as a private gun club, which he uses to solicit business for his gunshot. They further argue that any personal recreation use of the range by Mr. Armstrong and his family has expanded into a commercial use of the range, thereby extinguishing any pre-existing non-conforming protection the range may have previously enjoyed. Three, the use of the property as a gun range is not a permissible incidental accessory use of the residential property, as they argue that the range has transformed from a small-scale family shooting area into a large-scale developed commercial-related gun op, gun range operation, open to guns enthusiasts, and heavily used throughout the week at all hours. Having issued a cease and desist to Mr. Armstrong prohibiting the use of his range for commercial recreation purposes, the former building inspector found that he lacked any significant evidence of any activity at the range constituting a violation prompting enforcement. It is the building inspector's denial of further zoning enforcement action that is the subject of this appeal. As part of their appeal, the concerned citizens of West Boylston asked the ZBA to reverse the building inspector's denial of zoning enforcement action and to impose the following conditions on Wayne's use of the range. One, the use of the range returned to the quiet and unobtrusive use that existed prior to the issuance of the 1993 special permit for the home occupation for the gun repair and sale shop. Two, the use of the following weaponry be prohibited for any non-owner of the property, military-style weapons, semi-automatic weapons or assault weapons capable of rapid firing, explosive targets or other binary explosive devices, high-caliber weapons. explosive targets, or other binary explosive devices, high-caliber weapons, simulated automatic weapons, or bumpfire stocks, and NFA weapons. Three, the landowner, Mr. Almstrom, is required to be present to supervise all shooting on the property. Four, the number of persons presented on the property to shoot at any given time may not exceed -- Five, shooting on the property is to be restricted to limited periods of time and hours. Six, no guest shooting is allowed on the property on Sundays. In hearing this appeal, the board must decide whether to uphold or overturn the decision of the building inspector. Where the board consists of five permanent members, four out of the five members must vote to reverse the decision of the building inspector. Otherwise, the building inspector's decision stands. Any party aggrieved by the decision of the board may appeal by bringing an action in Superior Court within 20 days after the date of the board's decision is filed in the office of the town clerk. Okay. Okay. The West Boylston zoning bylaw provides standards for the use and improvement of parcels of property within the town. The zoning Board of Appeals has authority, in limited circumstances, to reverse decisions of the zoning enforcement officer, who is the building inspector in West Boylston. Any aggrieved person affected by an administrative decision of a zoning enforcement officer may appeal the decision to the zoning board. Appeals shall be initiated within 30 days after the zoning enforcement officer's decision. An administrative appeal is a legal process to resolve disputes regarding bylaw interpretation or where a zoning enforcement order is challenged. When certain bylaw language is unclear or contested, it must be interpreted in order to implement local land use policies. The purpose and history of the language should be considered in determining its intent. The board is politically responsible for the town for accurate interpretation of the West Boylston zoning bylaws. The zoning Board of Appeals is governed by the State Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48. The five regular members and alternates of the board are citizens appointed by the board's electorate who give their time without compensation. Normally, there are five voting members present, and according to the Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 15, it takes a concurring vote of four out of the five members to overturn or uphold an order or decision of the building inspector. In deciding on an appeal, the board acts as a quasi-judicial body because it functions similar to a court. It is the board's duty to preserve the integrity of the bylaw without modification as far as possible while ensuring substantial justice for the property owner. The board shall not vary the regulations of the bylaw unless it makes findings based upon the evidence presented in each specific case. Typically, zoning board meetings are low-key and only as formal as it is necessary. The applicant and/or representative must appear at the hearing to explain the appeal and to answer questions about the case. At the hearing, town officials, such as the building inspector and town council, may answer questions and present information, which may include drawings, maps, and photographs regarding the application. The board will make its decision only on the facts presented at the time of the hearing. Therefore, thereafter, any party aggrieved by the decision of the zoning board appeals may appeal to the Superior Court within 20 days after the ZBA's decision is filed in the office of the town clerk.
Now, that's a lot of information. You guys have sent a lot of information. All right, so I'm guessing everyone at the table, can you state your name for the record?
Good evening. David Vienz, I represent the petitioners in this matter. And with me is George Balata, one of the eight petitioners.
My name is Ed George Jr., and I represent Wayne Almstrom both individually and as the trustee of the Almstrom Realty Trust.
My name is Susan Chu. I'm here as co-counsel with attorney George, and I also represent Mr. Almstrom as individually and as trustee.
And also, we have Sandy Samia, who is Mr. Almstrom's daughter, who we are going to ask to speak for.
No, granddaughter.
Granddaughter. Kelly. I'm sorry, Kelly.
She here?
She's here.
Do you want to just come with a chair?
But his daughter, Sandy, is also here. She doesn't have to speak, but.
Okay.
Mr. Almstrom and his wife are in Florida. They go down there every year from December to April.
Okay, so this is how the meeting is going to run. Each side will have 15 minutes to present the facts based on what we've received. Then we will open it up for public comment. For that, there will be 30 minutes. I'd ask that, one at a time, we speak. If you do not agree with something someone is saying upfront, please keep that to yourself until it is time for me to speak. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairwoman Benoni, and other members of the zoning board appeals. I want to thank everyone else who's here tonight. I think it's important, regardless of where you stand on the issue, to be heard and to participate in this process. We're here to appeal, as we've heard, the denial of the building inspector of a request to enforce certain bylaws in the town concerning the use of the Almstrom property. We're here pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 8, and Chapter 48, Section 14 gives this board the power, essentially gives the board the same powers that the building inspector has, to regulate use of properties in the town that violate bylaws. I do want to clarify for the record, in terms of the relief we're seeking, as this process has gone on, we've evolved, the information has increased, and we've been able to research older bylaws, so we do seek that the gun range be closed to members of the public and only used by Mr. Almstrom and his family. And alternatively, if the board is not inclined to grant that, we would ask that the use be limited as we've set forth in the petition. And I'll come back to that point after I address some of the issues here. Before we start, I just wanted to make a reference to the original bylaws that were enacted in 1946 in West Boylston. Those bylaws created the zoning Board of Appeals, and in creating the Board of Appeals, this is what those bylaws stated. It said, "The Board of Appeals, appointed from time to time pursuant to the town bylaws, will act on all matters within its jurisdiction under this bylaw described in said section and subject to the rule that it shall give due consideration to preserving the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare in conserving property values, that it shall permit no building or use injurious, noxious, offensive, or detrimental to a neighborhood, and that it shall prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in each case." It's a very important obligation that you have, and we're here representing the eight petitioners who are supported by dozens of other residents in the town, who are asking the board to meet that obligation. The key issue in this matter is not whether the range is a commercial use or a non-commercial use. That issue's been decided already by the prior building inspector, and back in July, the building inspector ordered that there be no commercial recreational activity at the range. That was not appealed, so that order is final. One issue is what that exactly means, how that's interpreted, how broadly that's interpreted. So one collateral issue is, what does that mean? Does that mean any, does it have to be a fee charge? Does it have to be a customer or former customer? But that's really a secondary issue. The key, the real question is, is use of this property as a gun range a permissible use under the bylaws? And so we look to the bylaws and see what the permissible uses are. The bylaws, the original bylaws and all amendments provide specific uses for different zone districts, and use is limited to those uses only. And then there's a question as to whether or not, if it's not a specifically permitted use, is this a use that was existing prior to the enactment of the bylaws? And is it a use that therefore has pre-existing nonconforming use status such that it's permitted to continue? So the first question, it's unclear based on Mr. Almstrom's filings in this case, is when does he allege that the current use of this property as a gun range began? It's unclear if it's in the 90s, if it's in the 80s, if it's in the 70s. It appears, based on his affidavit, that he began shooting, and various family members began shooting in the 1970s, is what they say. And then, in 1993, the Board of Appeals granted a special permit allowing this to operate a home business. And we have evidence in the record by way of affidavits and by way of police complaints that show that the types of complaints increased dramatically after the business began there, and particularly in the last several years, for some reason. So the first question is, when did this use begin? And that way, we can look at the bylaws that were in effect at the time, see what they permitted, and see whether or not this was a nonconforming use. But whether we look at the bylaws that are in effect today, that were in effect in 1993, in the 1970s, 60s, 50s, or even if we look at 1946, the result's the same. None of the bylaws have ever permitted use of a single-residence district property for a gun range or a gun club, and particularly the type that's operated there now. Looking back at 1946 and the bylaws, and I referenced some of this in the supplemental letter I sent on March 17th, and there's no claim that this use was existing in 1946 as far as I've ascertained. I don't know that Mr. Almstrom was even alive. I think the family just purchased the property around that time, and some additional buildings were constructed later on, I think in the 1970s. But looking back to the initial bylaw, and that indicated, it set the districts, zoning districts in the town, one of them being a single-residence district in this property, 241 and 251 Laurel Street. As far as the records, as far as they go back, indicate it's always been zoned as a single-residence district. And those original bylaws state that, "In a single-residence district, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used for any purpose except," then it gives the permissible uses: detached one-family dwelling, churches, schools, public libraries, public museums, parish houses, farms, stock farms, greenhouses, telephone exchanges, whatever that means. And then, there's a section that deals with transferring a property from a single-family to a double-family, and it's not an issue. And then it says, "Accessory use on the same lot with, and customarily incident, to any of the above permitted uses, and not detrimental to a residential neighborhood." That's essentially saying, the normal types of uses that you have with a single-residential property, you're permitted to do that. And I'll talk a little bit about what exactly that means in a moment. Those are the only uses that are permissible. And then later on, the bylaws say, as all bylaws say, "Any pre-existing nonconforming uses that were legally in effect at the time of the enactment are permitted to go forward. They may not change or substantially increase, but they're permitted to go forward." There's no evidence, there's no claim that this range, this gun club, was in effect in 1946. Therefore, if you look at the bylaws that were in effect then, this was never a permitted use at the property in question. The amended bylaws over the years never changed that. If you look at the bylaws in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, the present, some slight changes to the permissible uses in single-residence districts, mostly related to agricultural uses, but there's never been any category of use that permits a use of a gun range or a gun club. And then in the 90s, it looks like there was a specific reference to commercial recreational use that was permitted in some districts, but it was not permitted in single-residence districts. And there's no evidence in any of the bylaws at any time that commercial recreational use was ever permitted. So I would suggest that the use of the property as a gun range or a gun club has never been a permissible use as the property in question. So the next question is, is it an accessory use? Is it incidental? And I would ask that whoever has their cellphone chirping, that they turn that off to silent. But the next question is, is it an accessory use, customarily incidental to the use of the property? And what exactly does that mean? It means what normal things that people do on their property. People have cookouts, they have gatherings, they have back swimming pools, they have the normal stuff that people do on their property. Use of a property in the manner that it's been used as a gun range, a gun club, with heavy traffic throughout the year, in the early morning, in the evening, machine guns, cannon-like explosions taking place, that's never been an accessory use, a customarily incidental use of property. And if you look at the D. Giovanni case.
Please hold on one second.
Really?
Please, silent your cellphones, or shut it off. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'll give you back that time.
The D. Giovanni versus Pope case is a land court case, and a copy of that is attached to the submission that was given to the building inspector, and it's in the record. But that case talks about what is an accessory use of a property. And that particular case dealt with renting a Cape Cod property for weddings or other large-scale events. Essentially, the court there said, "This is not a normal use of a property. Having an occasional party or wedding is normal, but every weekend, having a wedding, having a large-scale gathering was not an accessory use of the property." And they talk about the factors that you look at. It has to be something that's incidental, subordinate, attendant, infrequent, and not intense, and really minor insignificance. So looking at those factors and comparing what is happening at this property, this is not incidental, it's not reasonable, it's not customary, and it's not minor insignificance. And the affidavits we've submitted, and what you'll hear from some of the folks who are in support of our position, will demonstrate that. There's, the burden to establish a use as a pre-existing nonconforming use is on the party claiming that use. So that burden's on Mr. Almstrom, and nothing he has submitted by way of affidavit or otherwise establishes that the use is a nonconforming use. The permit issue, and I just want to briefly touch on that. In 1993, the Board of Appeals gave Mr. Almstrom a permit to operate a home business selling guns and ammunition, and he only asked permission to sell guns and ammo and to perform repairs. He didn't request permission, nor was he granted permission, to use firing ranges on the property to test guns. There was, if you look at the meeting minutes, that's also in the record. One of the members at the time asked Mr. Almstrom if there was a gun range on the property, and he responded by saying, "Yes, my father's property has a gun range in the back." And then there was some further questioning about his father's target-shooting range. There was no indication or suggestion that that range would be used in connection with the business. It was essentially, "My father has a gun range," you know, that was the extent of it. So the implication there was, the gun range is not going to have anything to do with this business. And in fact, the board at that time expressed safety concerns. They wanted a vault on the property to store the weapons. They wanted to make sure that weapons weren't loaded while they were stored, so there was a concern at the time for safety. And clearly, if Mr. Almstrom at the time requested as part of that permit, permission to operate a gun range, that would have been a different consideration, and there likely would have been a different result there. And we're not trying to, the petitioners aren't requesting to shut down his business. They're requesting that he followed the rules that everyone else follows, that his property be used in a reasonable way, that it be used in conformity with the zoning bylaws. The, a couple of other points with regard to the bylaws. The current bylaws specifically prohibit use of single-residence properties for private clubs, business associations, or professional member associations, which is essentially what Mr. Almstrom has created up there, a private club where he permits friends and customers and acquaintances to come onto the property and shoot at any time without any oversight. And it's clear that that use was related to his business for many years, and it grew into the manner it's used today because of that business. In the record, there are records from the West Boylston Police Department. We requested, through a Freedom of Information Act request, all records concerning complaints for the property, and they were Bates-numbered, page 1 to 154. And if you review those records, there's many references to complaints of use of firing on the property, and then references to the business. For instance, and I'll just reference a couple of them for the record, in September 2000 reference on page 3, and the page references other Bates-numbered reference, references an armored truck company practice shooting on the property. There was a reference on page 5 of those police records from October of 01, after a complaint of loud noise, loud explosions. A customer was just trying out a new shotgun. In 2005, page 7, there was a reference to police training at the range. There are references later on and throughout to Facebook posts, and this is later on, with, you know, as we pass through time, in 2015, the Facebook post, the business and the range are open. So it's clear that that business was directly tied to the range, and the business grew as the range grew. Those same police records indicate a very important concern as well with regard to safety. This is an unlicensed, unregulated, unmonitored gun range, and there's a heavy traffic of people coming on there, shooting high artillery weapons, exploding targets, machine guns, semi-automatic weapons. And there are various references in those police records to folks on the rail trail, to folks fishing out on the nearby river, gunfire. to folks fishing out on the nearby river, gunfire and bullets ricocheting, ricocheting through the woods. For instance, on page 9 and 10 of the police records, there's a reference to bullets whizzing through trees on River Road. It turns out there were five people shooting a 50 caliber rifle at the time, and they admitted that they lost a few rounds into the woods. There's, on page 15, there's a September of 2011 reference to ricocheting bullets on the rail trail. And it turned out they were sighting a new rifle on the property, and they were doing some adjustments to the target range. Again, in 2012, page 19, bullets flying by on the rail trail. Similar references fill these police records, and it's very fortunate that there hasn't been an accident. But that's one of the main reasons why there's zoning regulations, to make sure that uses like this are regulated and done in a safe manner. And throughout the police records, there are references to hours-long shooting sessions, high caliber shooting on holidays, Christmas Eve, New Year's Day, all holidays, early morning shooting beginning throughout the day, cannon-like fire, and people reporting problems with an equestrian event nearby on page 59 of the police records. The gunfire disrupted horses and nearly caused an incident with children participating in that activity. Those records just show a glimpse of the effect that this use has had in the neighborhood. And it's significant, and it's extreme. There's been reference to some statutes that...
I just want to give you your timing. Sorry, I'm going to give you two more minutes, so if you start to...
Okay. There are references to a few statutes that have no relevance to this matter. The 26912E deals with criminal violation, dealing with discharge of a firearm. That's a criminal statute. That does not apply here. We're not seeking to prosecute Mr. Almstrom. So that doesn't create any rights. That doesn't, has no relevance here. Similarly, 2147B, again, that's a liability defense to civil and criminal actions, and it applies to certain types of ranges, and essentially is an exemption of civil liability. Again, this is a zoning matter. That statute has nothing to do with zoning enforcement. It doesn't excuse zoning compliance. And again, that only applies if the use was a pre-existing non-conforming use, which, as I mentioned, this use does not meet that standard. There was a submission to the board by Ms. Meliker showing that Mr. Almstrom is still reporting this range open in connection with his business, his Facebook post, and it's in the record. Talks about two ranges available, one in the back and one behind the shop. They're free, but pick up after yourself. And there's also a schedule already by A+ Firearms, where there's seven commercial live-fire sessions scheduled right now for April, May, and June. These defy the current order in place, and they also defy the bylaws. We request again that the property be, because it's an impermissible use of the property, the gun range be closed to members of the public. That's the only feasible solution here. This problem was created by Mr. Almstrom's violations. That's the only feasible solution. And that his family members and Mr. Almstrom are free to use the property. But we would respectfully request that that be limited to reasonable use of perhaps an hour a day between sunlight hours, 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., that it be restricted. You know, no shooting on Sundays, and that the types of weaponry revert back to what was being used in the property prior to, really, the expansion of this after his business was put in place.
All right, so that brings us right at that side. I thank you very much.
Okay.
So I'm going to give you 18 minutes, because I wanted him to be able to finish. So I'll give you fair on both sides.
Save the last three for...
Save the last three for yourself.
No, no, for Kelly.
Okay. Three minutes, Kelly.
The...
You don't have to stand if you don't want to. I don't want to make you stand. You don't, you can. I was just, I figured, if you want to sit, I will not take offense there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The 1946 bylaw doesn't say that you can have a swimming pool. It doesn't say you can have an archery range. It doesn't say that you can have a bocce court. It doesn't say that you can have all kinds of things that were in 1946, not only ordinary and common uses in residential districts, but even today in this town are ordinary and common uses. And no, it doesn't say you can have a firing range either. It doesn't say you can't have a firing range. We submitted, by the way, we received Attorney Vines's petition last Wednesday, although his firm was well aware, having emailed us in January, that we represented Mr. Almstrom. So we haven't had a lot of time to respond to this, but we, in that sense, we've had time to respond as lawyers. We haven't had time to go out and get hundreds of signatures in the last five business days. But we will at some point ask you to let us supplement our submission with signatures of people who are not opposed to Mr. Almstrom, and who are more people that live within a mile of his range and his separate gun shop than they have submitted. If this is, you know, a majority takes all, or at least if the board wants a sense of who feels whatever way. They've been out for months collecting these signatures by stopping people down on the rail trail and asking them to sign the petition. We've submitted a letter to the board dated March 22nd, 2016, two days ago. And I just want to review that and the enclosures with it briefly. And that letter says that we enclosed 20 copies of the documents. We thought we were supposed to do that, so we did. We submit, first of all, Mr. Wayne Almstrom's affidavit. If you look at number one, that's Mr. Almstrom's affidavit. The last page of that affidavit indicates that it was mailed to us on the 18th, two days after we learned about this submission by, maybe it was three days, by Bodich and Dewey. And it's submitted from Florida, because he's in Florida. He's in Florida, and he goes to Florida right after Christmas, and has done so for a number of years. Every year, comes back on April 1st. His wife, Mary, is there as well. We have two envelopes that were delivered from Bodich and Dewey to his house address, to him. He's not there. His wife's not there. His daughters didn't open them. We have them right now. They brought them in tonight. Okay, so he didn't know about this. But we got on the phone with him, and we went over the thing with him, Susan and I, Ms. Chu, who is my co-counsel, and put together an affidavit, sent it down to him. These are his words, okay? "I got a 700 in my English college boards. I corrected a few misspellings and grammar and tried to put it in more concise English." But they're his words, believe me. I didn't create them, and I didn't plagiarize them from someplace else. This is Wayne's affidavit. Susan has attached as well to our, I think, item, an exhibit in item number two, the land records.
Okay.
The Almstrom family acquired this land, which is the range, on which the range is located, in 1942. Subsequently, his mother and father, okay, separated it into 251 as a house lot for Wayne Almstrom and Mary Almstrom, and 241, which is where the range is, all right? And 241 also has a section of it, a separate lot, but it's known as 241 where his son lives. Stephen lives in the house. The shooting, Mr. Almstrom tells you, has gone on, okay, has gone on. Essentially, his mother, Ethel, taught him to shoot, not his dad. Most people, you know, who say, "My dad taught me to shoot," they say, "My dad taught me to shoot." Ethel Almstrom taught her son to shoot, all right? And he says that in his affidavit. And he says in paragraph four, in answer to David's question, "I have regularly since the late 1970s invited my friends whom I know from associations with them in many walks of life to shoot on my range at 241 Laurel Street. I have done so long before building and opening the separate building on 251 Laurel Street, known as Wayne's Weaponry, in 1995 when I started my gun shop." Now, he got a permit in '93, okay, or '91, to operate as a gunsmith. But he then built a separate building on the same 1 1/3 acre parcel, I forget, it's a 1.27, where his house is located, for the gun shop. And he opened the gun shop in 1995. It's interesting to me that with all the language and the accusations and the assertions and the suppositions that the range has become more active, that it's become more heavily used, et cetera. Mr. Almstrom worked full-time for the town of West Boylston, okay, from, I think, 1968 until when he retired, within the last several years. Mr. Almstrom always operated his gun shop from 5:00 to 9:00 at night, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, when he worked full-time for the town. He's retired since. He still operates his gun shop from 5:00 to 9:00 at night, Monday through Friday, and he's cut back from 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, okay? So the gun shop, in spite of the accusation that all of the activity on the range is associated with the gun shop, the gun shop isn't open during the day until 5:00, okay? It's open from 5:00 to 9:00. He submitted in his affidavit, sworn statement, that he doesn't ask and has never asked anybody for money. Has he let groups shoot there? Yes, he has. I'll get to that in a second. But he's never required people to buy guns from him or ammunition from him. In fact, he tells you in the affidavit, "Most of the people who shoot at his range buy their ammunition and their guns from the big box stores." And I'm sure you're all familiar, having been to Walmart and Dick's Sporting Goods. I'm sure if you haven't been, you know people that have been in your families. Okay, you as a gun store owner can't compete with the sale of ammunition with Dick's Sporting Goods or Walmart. They'll undercut you every day. And the reason, without accusation, is that they buy in huge bulk. He doesn't make a requirement that people buy ammunition. And in fact, he tells you in the affidavit, "Most of the people who shoot ammunition and guns at his range buy them someplace else," in addition to not requiring people to shoot at his range. Why does Wayne do this? Okay, because that's the kind of guy he is. He's involved in the shooting sports. He's been involved in the shooting sports all his life. We had Mr., we had a meeting in this town hall with Mr. George Bellata and...
Lori Burns?
Lori Burns, and with the town administrator at the time acting, Mr. Purcell, and with counsel for the town, Carolyn Murray. And we talked about this whole problem in September. And I sent a letter to them. I sent a letter to Chris Lund, and it's in here. It's attached as, I think, number three. And it says, in essence, "Okay, we had a meeting." It's not a settlement letter. It says, "We'd like to settle with you." It says, "You know, we've had some ideas at that meeting. We can change the configuration of the range, move the firing points down off the hill onto the flat land, okay? We can build a shoot house, in other words, a firing station thing, where the sound is attenuated by containing the shooting in three separate, several separate stalls, okay? And using sound-absorbing material inside." But there's two things we need to know. We need to know, first of all, that you, Mr. Bellata, do represent. He wasn't represented by counsel then, okay? And we have Dr. Davis email telling us at that time and later that Dr. Davis was represented by Bodich and Dewey. And that email, which we have a copy of, says that Bodich and Dewey doesn't represent Mr. Bellata. So it wasn't a question of, he didn't have his counsel there. He said he didn't have counsel. So we wrote the letter to Chris Lund as a facilitator. We CC'd it to Carolyn Murray, the town council. We CC'd it to Lori Burns. We CC'd it to Mr. Bellata, and we said, "We need to know that you represent a significant number of people who live within the neighborhood around Almstrom's range, and then we can deal with you. We're not going to make a settlement agreement or any agreement with you or two or three other people, and then find out we have to deal with other people." And we need something else. We need to know that the town, if you modify the range to alleviate the sound, okay, is not going to say, "Okay, under 2147B," and I respectfully disagree with my brother counsel, okay, I think it does apply to this range. I think zoning was the reason 2147B was enacted. If you look at the legislative history, it talks about towns not enacting zoning bylaws, okay, sound bylaws to forbid ranges, as well as civil and criminal lawsuits, because they're thinking about, you know, protecting those ranges. We never heard back from the town. We need to have whatever grand... And we didn't say you have to give us grandfather status. We said, "Please just get the town to say whatever grandfather status we have. Whatever we have is not going to be lost by making these changes." I even went to an engineer and got a whole drawing, a whole set of drawings for this whole thing. Never heard another word from him. Now, you look at all of the letters that come from, come from the people in this petition. Most of them don't live within a mile. Most of them have bought their houses long since that gun shop was opened up. They say, "The shooting has gotten much worse." One lady says, "We bought our house in 2014, and, you know, it's just much, much worse." It's much worse since when? Since 2014, okay? I'm sorry, in Susan's memorandum, it's really, she is the, which is in the second exhibit here, she points out at the bottom of page 3, you know, of the 15 households less than a mile from 241 Laurel Street, who signed a signature petition emailed by CCW's counsel on March 17th. Here's one of the 15 households purchased their properties prior to 1903. Six purchased their homes during the period, '93 to 2009. Seven of the 15 purchased their homes since 2010 or later. Well, the ZBA's reference, excluding the towns and the Commonwealth plans, and that's another point. There are hundreds of acres of land that surround Wayne Almstrom's shooting range. And that's why we've attached the submission packet number one, that Chris Lund, it's, I think it's the fourth thing, that Chris Lund submitted to the selectmen at their meeting, okay? And it shows, if you look at the pictures in there, you see there are, I mean, that's green. That's hundreds and hundreds of acres of DCM land where shooting, hunting is allowed, and shooting occurs, legally occurs, from October 1st to February 28th, five months out of the year. It surrounds on three sides, in fact, it surrounds almost on four sides, Wayne Almstrom's shooting range. There are three gun clubs within a five-mile area, okay? Several are within a two-mile area of Wayne Almstrom's range. There's a police shooting range, okay, in the DCM land or next to it. It's a butts Wayne's, it's within, I don't want to say a butts, it's within 100 yards of Wayne's property. So where is the proof, okay? As a lawyer, I see all these accusations. We all know how much worse it's gotten. We all know what Wayne is allowing people to do. No, you don't. You don't have any evidence whatsoever as to who's doing the shooting, where, in what area, of what guns, all right? One more thing. Do I have one more minute left, or do I have...
Two more.
Two more. I'm going to save one for Kelly. All of these restrictions they're looking for restrict the kind of calibers. They've always used the same calibers. Anybody who knows anything about shooting will tell you that a 223 caliber, i.e. 5.56 millimeter round, as used in an AR-15, is nothing like power, velocity, noise, et cetera. Well, it's velocity, but not this, it's not the same bullet. It's a smaller, quieter bullet, by far, than a .30-6, okay, caliber bullet as used in a World War II M1. All of these things, they're going to tell us when Wayne can shoot, who he can shoot with. I'm going to ask you something. Ladies and gentlemen, seriously, who's going to enforce all this? Okay, let me turn it over. Sorry to be emotional, but I understand your town has gotten more, less rural, okay? But this has been, this has been his range, his home, for a long, long time. And we have a lot of people, okay, one guy has filed an affidavit in here, and he says he just moved here in 2014, and his problem is that it reminds him of the shooting and the drug crime that he witnessed in New York City. Well, you know, this ain't New York City. And I'm just going to ask Kelly to say something.
Can you state your name?
Yep.
And your address, sorry.
Okay, yeah. My name is Kelly Samia. I do live at 251 Laurel Street, which is Wayne's house, as many of you know. And I'm speaking on behalf of him, because he's actually in Florida, until April. I'm 21 years old, and I've probably been shooting since I was about eight years old. The first time I ever shot a gun, I was with my grandfather, and it was a 22 caliber. I have shot pretty much everything since then, and to be honest with you, I don't think guns have changed that much. I don't think they've gotten louder. I don't think they've gotten that quieter. I don't think they've gotten that quieter. I mean, it's all pretty much stayed the same. And pretty much my grandfather's taught me everything about guns. I'm just here on behalf of him to defend his aspect of everything.
One other, we have a picture in our package of this huge range. It's a little cow pasture with a backstop.
Am I good?
Thank you both.
Two minutes under.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're two minutes under, actually.
I'm debating. I'm not, I need a moment.
What are you debating on?
I'm opening it up to public comment. I kind of--
I'd like to ask questions.
I'd like, yeah. So, we're going to have some questions for both sides during that time. If you could do your best, passionate and all, to let each other fully answer the question and respect everyone in the room so they can hear, that would be great. Ms. Anderson, do you have a question for--
Yes. Beans, Vans?
Vans.
Vans. Sir, so your position, if I can say this correctly, you don't think the firing of a weapon on the private property is per se prohibited?
No, certainly isn't. Firing a weapon, if you have an owner-- Would you like me to stand or sit?
Yeah.
If an owner has a legal weapon, a license to use it, and they have the sufficient clearance to fire, they certainly can shoot. The issue is the level of shooting. You know, an owner doesn't have a right to go out every day and shoot for six hours and to bring out the machine gun and, you know, shoot all day long because that becomes a use that's not customary, that's not incidental, that's not reasonable. That's when you start to interfere with other people's rights. And we're not trying to prevent Mr. Alstrom from exercising his constitutional rights to shoot. It's this kind of public use, this huge volume, heavily trafficked use that has, that has taken over this property that's problematic.
Putting aside for a moment the commercial nexus that may exist, so firing on, on the property by the property owner, you don't think is per se prohibited? At least, at some point, you think the quantity of fire may, may become prohibited, but--
Correct. A lot of people have weapons that they go, they have the clearance, they have the, you know, the woods and the cover to do it. A lot of people shoot weapons occasionally. And, you know, the question, what's reasonable? What's, at what point does this become a primary use of the property, a non-kind of customary use? And that's happened a long time ago with six, seven, eight hours of shooting all day long and classes, training sessions and--
Well, the classes and training sessions seems to raise the question as to whether or not there's a commercial nexus, which was part of the cease and desist letter--
But even if it was a free training, you know, if Mr. Alstrom was hosting free training sessions and having a large volume of people come on the property, even though there was no--
Well--
--commercial nature, we would say that that's not a permissible use because it's not an incidental accessory use of the property.
Do you think that commercial necessarily, in this context, requires paying for it? I mean, if you're hosting something, you know, associated, if I own a business and I give free seminars, isn't there a--
Yes.
--commercial nexus?
I think there is.
Regardless of whether or not I've charged any money for it?
Correct. I think that the commercial piece explains why we are where we are. You know, if anyone claims that Mr. Alstrom would be using the property how he's using it, even if he never opened up this gun business, I, I don't know if you could say that with a straight face, that you'd have hundreds of people coming on your property behind your house and shooting all day long just out of the kindness of your heart. Clearly, there's a nexus between the business. But that's not necessary. You don't need to find that nexus in order to stop this use because this has become a excessive and a non-incidental use of property.
So, it's somewhere in there, you think we are to find a line as to where one crosses from permissible use, which you agree there is some level of permissible use, to the amount of firing or perhaps the type of firing that occurs. In some, some point, we've crossed the line, that, and at that point, it is, it violates the zoning bylaws?
Correct. And it's a tough, I guess, question to have, but the problem that we have is because of the flagrant use of this property and floating of the bylaws. So, that's why I think the only feasible solution is to say, "This range cannot be used, cannot be opened up to the public anymore." You can't say, you know, "He can bring his friends over" because then how do you know who his friends are? And everyone's his friend, and his prior customers, and his customers. And that's something that would be a worthless order if you limited it to, you know, his family and friends because then all of a sudden, you know, this large network of friends he has would be still shooting on the property. So, I think the only feasible solution is, it's closed to the public. It's no longer going to be open to the public. He's able to shoot. His family can shoot. But even that use needs to be reasonable. You know, it can't be all day long, every day.
So, we have a spectrum of, on one side, permissible use by the property owner. And what you would, I assume, argue today is, somewhere beyond that spectrum is a line of occasional or minimal firing by the property owner. At some point, we have a clear violation in your mind where we're, there's a commercial nexus. This is part and parcel of the commercial enterprise of the gun shop, which has gone well beyond what is contemplated by the zoning bylaws. And some point to the left on my spectrum would be that fuzzy area where we need to figure out where that line is. Is that--
Yes, yeah. And just to follow up on a point that Attorney George made, people have swimming pools and bocce courts and, you know, basketball hoops in the driveway. That's all normal stuff, and that's accessory use. And it doesn't specifically say in the bylaws that you can have a basketball hoop in your driveway. But if you built up an Olympic-sized swimming pool in your backyard and all of a sudden you were having classes and competitions and there's referees blowing whistles, blowing whistles, and, you know, people coming and showing up and watching, that all of a sudden, that's not permissible. And that's really what's happened to you.
So, what I, what I'm trying, you've suggested that the only reasonable solution now is to cut this down to only family. Did I understand that correctly?
I think so. I think that that's a reasonable solution here. It's--
But if we're looking at this spectrum, as I suggested, if we're, if we're, if we were hypothetically to agree that we are clearly outside the bounds of what is permissible, would it be appropriate for us to move all the way down on that spectrum to only family as the first step in this process? Or would it be, what is at issue before us is getting enforcement of the zoning bylaw. So, wouldn't it be more appropriate to take steps to direct the zoning enforcement officer to attempt to enforce the zoning bylaws in a less restrictive manner than you're suggesting? For example, we have a lot of allegations of commercial use. You've certainly submitted a great deal of documents related to commercial use, which, you know, it's like Facebook posts and a variety of other documents. So, by eliminating that type of use, presumably this would reduce the quantity of firing on the property. And wouldn't it be wise to first figure out, once the commercial nexus is eliminated and all commercial firing or associated commercial firing is eliminated, what that leaves us with? And if that leaves us with something that is tolerable and more consistent with what's being used in this area, which apparently also includes area for DCR land that can be used for hunting, so you'd have gunfire regardless, and apparently there's a police range in there. So, rather than go all the way down to, "You can't bring friends on your property," but something, something in the middle, something saying, you know, having enforcement or more vigorous enforcement of the prohibition on commercial, on connection to the commercial enterprise. Would that not be an appropriate, before we go all the way, wouldn't that be an appropriate first step?
I don't think so because it's already been done. The building inspector's already said, "No commercial recreational use." That was in July. And if you look at the police--
The building inspector said that, but has that been, you know, I'm not sure that we've had, it's been clear to me as to what steps have been taken to enforce that. And there was apparently some ambiguity, or at least interpreted some ambiguity, as to the, what was being ordered under that cease and desist letter. So, again, my concern is that enforcing, making sure that a current prohibition is enforced versus, you know, we take that step and make sure that that's being enforced before we create new rules.
I'd like to give you a chance because I know you took up response to this.
Yeah, I do. When we met in September, the whole issue of the commercial thing came up, okay? Bear in mind, anybody can post whatever they want on Facebook, okay? There was classes in the past conducted by other people without fee paid to Mr. Alstrom, without his supplying the guns and the ammunition or anything else, simply because the people who taught the classes are friends of his. As of September, he has stopped all classes using the gun range. He voluntarily did that. Number two, he says in his affidavit that his firearms, federal firearms license expires December, okay, May 2017. He's going to close the shop, he says it on the Thames and Belles Bridge, on December 31st, 2016. The only thing he's going to use is FFL for from December 31st of this year until May, I think it's 1st, it's in the affidavit, of 2017, is to wholesale out to other dealers, mostly, I think, probably entirely, other towns, other states, his inventory. He's going to retire from operating a gun shop, all right? So, one of the things is, he voluntarily, last May, stopped all Sunday shooting because they asked. He moved in September, the time that the range was open, back to 6 o'clock from dark. In the summertime, it's dark until 8:00, 8:30 at night. People used to shoot there until 8:00, 8:30 at night, you know, like almost six, seven, eight months in a year. He said, "No, no more shooting after 6:00. No more, no more classes run by anybody." And I believe, I can certainly tell you, since he left in December, that's been true, okay? Not a subject that covered with him, but he agreed to do that, and we confirmed that with him. So, we're not, let me make your job a little easier, sir. We're not asking to be able to continue to let people conduct classes for money for themselves. And Wayne's not asking to allow, to be allowed to conduct classes for himself for money. And he's not asking to do commercial use as they conceive of it. Their conception is, there's a range and there's a gun shop, and therefore, the range brings people to the gun shop. Actually, it brings them mostly during the day. The gun shop, as I said, is open at night. He's going to close that in December of this year. By Christmas, it'll be gone. So, that whatever you decide is prospectively applicable to the extent that it agrees with this assumption of commercial attraction, okay? That commercial thing goes away. And the part about the classes has gone away, okay? We're not going to say, "Gee, it was wrong to do it." They did it for years. People use, you know, they use classes there. The neighbors complained about it. We had a meeting. I discussed this with Carolyn Murray, you know, Susan and I did, with Chris Lund. We prevailed on the client to not have classes there anymore. Can somebody still post an email or whatever and say, "We're running a class," when they've done it forever, or what they think is forever? And probably with a lot of these people, twice is forever. Yeah, they can. We're not in the enforcement of the media business, especially Wayne.
So, that brings a question up. So, anyone can post whatever they want online. But are you saying that those classes are not going to be running on the property?
They haven't been run since September.
So, the class is coming up. They're not going to come on to the property and shoot?
That's right. I talked to Wayne about that when we got this. He said, "I didn't post that. I didn't agree to it. It's not going to happen."
If I, just briefly respond to that point. And Mr. Alstrom has said previously, I believe, at the prior public hearing, there was a board of selectmen hearing back in August, I believe. He said, and he said he intends to close the shop down, but that's not going to change anything. The use is going to continue. The volume of use is going to continue. So, any suggestion that, "Oh, well, the business is going to close down, so things are going to get better," that's not the case. Mr. Alstrom has specifically said that's not the case. The problem is, of this network of people that has developed over 30 years, you know, people, customers and friends and NRA friends and goal friends, they've all developed this big friendship and network. Those people are going to shoot there forever as long as this town permits them to shoot. So, whether or not the business is gone, there's certainly no commercial element anymore. But all these people who are prior customers and friends, and then their friends, and that's going to continue unless, unless the board ends that. So, that's really irrelevant, the fact that he's going to close the business down. And the commercial pieces is really irrelevant.
I would suggest to you, their whole argument is based on an argument that the commercial use of 251 and the gun shop on 251 is directly connected to the use of the range, and that the commercial use is what allows and enables and brings forth the shooting on the range. Now, we're saying, "Well, if the commercial use completely goes away, Wayne isn't going to sell anything after December 31st. The town of West Boylston, in the way of guns, ammunition, accessories, are-- Now, they're saying, "Well, that's not good enough, okay? Just like they said, Sunday shooting's not good enough. Just like they said, changing it to 6:00, which they asked for, is not good enough." So, let me quote you something my dear Uncle George told me. You give them an inch, they take them out, and the next thing you know, they're rulers, okay? They want the range closed, period. And if you look at these affidavits, you're going to see that a lot of these people, okay, are heavily, are heavily anti-gun. An affidavit submitted by Mr. Vans, "I didn't move to a terrorist country or to a gang neighborhood. Gunshot, gunfire should not be a part of my daily life all day long." That's, that's in their affidavit. It's signed by, I don't know if I can read his name, Jared Jessica, I can't read the last name. It's dated 13 March 2016. It's not the only one like that. You have a lot of people who voted into this town from other places, okay, where they associate gunfire. There's been, nobody's been shot. Nobody's been hit with a bullet. Nobody's been, no, they have a thing in here about somebody's window. One affiant says a window got hit by a bullet. From whom? Any police chief in a town like this, and I've been to several of them with these problems, that has this kind of land. Look at what Chris Weld, it's Chris Lund--
It's in this one.
--put in our attachment number four. Look at the acreage, look at the acreage that he put in here. Look at the land that surrounds, the undevelopable land that surrounds this range. You know, and he even put a chart in here. Owners, DCR-owned land, north of the Quantuck Foxit River, 77 acres. South of the Quantuck Foxit River, 391 acres. Town of West Boylston, 21 acres. Worcester-owned land, landlocked, 39 acres, okay? He goes on, and it's 435 acres. That's a lot of land, folks, surrounding this. Any police chief will tell you, people go in there, it's not just the hunters. It's not just the hunters. People go into those places and shoot. And one externality of saying, "Not even Wayne's friends can go and shoot on the range. Only Wayne's family, only four at a time, only under his supervision." So, we're going to tell this young lady, Kelly Samia, that she can't, who's, you know, 21, who's a professional photographer, who's lived there all her life, lives at 251. Her grandfather owns the house. She's shot there. She's certified and qualified and everything else. She can't go out there except under the supervision. Any police chief will tell you, there's all kinds of people running around in the woods. And if you have a bullet through somebody's window in an area like this, two to one, that bullet hasn't been fired from an established firing point at an established backstop. We have photos in our attachment of this range. There's a backstop there, shooting downhill at a backstop. That bullet's been fired by somebody, okay, fooling around in the woods. Whether or not it's intentional or not, they're shooting at tin cans, they're shooting it, they're just out there because it's open land, and they want to shoot. An externality is, you're going to get more of that.
Mr. Bellata, did you have a comment? I saw your--
No, he suggested I keep my mouth closed.
Well, no, but the issue with--
It's always good when a lawyer says that. It's a good reminder.
If I can just make a quick point, a quick point on the commercial issue. That argument, our argument doesn't rest on that. That's a separate issue. We, our argument is really premised on this accessory use. Is this, is this gun range, gun club use, permitted use under the bylaws? Look at the bylaws. Doesn't give anything, no category that permits that. So, then the question is, is it an accessory use?
It's not a gun--
And if you look at the Di Giovanni case, it's clear that what's, their use is not an accessory, incidental, customary use. Whether it's commercial or not is irrelevant. That's a subsidiary issue. You can take that argument and throw it in the garbage, and we still, we still should prevail under the, under the bylaws and under the accessory use issue.
In the Di Giovanni case, they were charging rent for the weddings and things they were holding. It's not the same case. It's not on all four-- holding. It's not the same case. It's not on all fours, as lawyers say. It's not on all threes. It doesn't have two legs, it doesn't even stand on one. It's not analogous to this case at all.
Raj, did you have a question?
In your opinion, who can shoot in that place?
Who can shoot? Well, it's a tough question because it's the, he's, he's abused the, the use of this property, and I think the analogy that, that my brother gave is more applicable to Wayne. You give an inch, he'll take a mile. Wayne was given an inch, and he took 100 miles, and we're left with this grotesque use of this property. I think it's clear that Mr. Alstrom, as the owner, and the other residents can, can shoot on the property.
Other residents?
Other residents, I believe his wife and his children and some grandchildren live there. They're all free to shoot on the property. Residents of 251 and 241 are the adjacent-
How about friends?
See, that's where you get into a difficult question, because his friends are, is this vast network of people that he's developed over the years because of this business, their customers, their people who've been buying from him and having, using his services for many years, and people that he's become friends with through that business. So, if he's permitted to have his friends there, it's going to be the same people. All of his customers are his friends. All the people that have been there for all these years are his friends. So, I think because of what he's done there, that's why that has to be limited.
So, I shouldn't be inviting any friends to my backyard?
Well, you can't, for what, for what purpose? For what purpose? I mean, he can invite if it's a, if-
If I have a huge backyard.
People are free to invite people to the property for any legal reason, and it's not, until-
So, is, is this illegal reason?
To have, no, it's not. To have a gun, gun range and a gun club?
Shooting, is it, shooting is-
There's no evidence that there's a-
Stop, stop.
There's no evidence of that.
Is, is this backyard, it is his backyard, he has a lot of land, is his shooting is permitted or not?
It would be if, if he did not create this large-scale gun range that is open to large groups of people at all days, all days of the week, all hours of the, all hours of the night. That's not permissible. If, if he didn't, if he didn't have a business there, didn't have this huge public invitation, if he just used it normally, like other people use their property, they shoot occasionally, they have friends come by and shoot, that's permissible. And thousands of people do that across the, across the state. That's not what he's done here. So, there's a difference. There's a big difference.
Mr. Benson?
The difference that you're citing, you say he's abused this, so it sounds like you're asking us to now create a punitive rule for this person for past wrongs, in your opinion. Now, we're going to restrict this person in such a way that, because of their past actions, which in effect is punitive. If this isn't something that is applied across the town to all residents of the town, but we're doing this because of what he allegedly did in the past, isn't, doesn't this become punitive?
It's not. It's, he's built up a public-style gun range, so what we're asking to do is to close that down. He's not, he shouldn't be allowed to have some people still use it, or certain people still use it. The use of the property as this large-scale gun range is impermissible. So, if someone built up a-
But I understand, but you're, you, you want to limit this to no friends because you're concerned that he has this vast network of friends. But once we, you, the problem with drawing lines is, you draw that line, now we have made a different line for him than somebody three miles down the road who has a similar parcel of land who can't invite a friend over. Well, because this gentleman has a large network of friends that you contend, and perhaps rightly so, has used this land excessively for firing because of this past practice, and now this large developed network of gun enthusiasts that uses the property, this person will now be restricted to no friends, but the person who lives two miles away who has not developed this network of, of gun enthusiasts would not share that limitation.
I'm not aware of any other use similar to what Mr. Alstrom has with this-
Well, hypothetically, would you, is that not what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's not quite that way, to give an-
Why not?
And to give an example, if, if he built, if someone built up a, a racetrack and they started-
Well, I don't want to talk about racetracks. If there's somebody who's two miles down the road who has a very similar-looking piece of property, is this person now going to be prohibited from having friends over? So, just this individual, and if we treat this individual in that manner, isn't this individual being treated disparately and therefore punitively for past actions?
No, because this individual has a use that is violating the bylaws, and it's the ZBA's duty to remedy that.
But isn't my hypothetical individual two miles down the road in the exact same position?
He hasn't done anything to violate the bylaws, so there's no remedy needed by the ZBA. Here, it's all-
The remedy you're asking will now create this individual to be treated differently than that person two miles down the road who also may invite friends over. So, the person two down, two miles down the road who has a very similar-looking piece of property could invite a friend over to shoot, because they haven't violated the bylaws in the past, at least, to the purposes of this argument. Because that person never violated a bylaw, they can have friends over. This person has violated the bylaw, so you're asking us to take an action that will prohibit them from violating the bylaw in the future, and the mechanism that we will do, to do that, is to limit this person from having no friends shoot.
Yes, I mean, that's-
So, we will treat these people disparately now?
Well, if someone violates the bylaws, then the ZBA can take action that limits their use of property. If someone else hasn't violated the bylaws, then there's not going to be any enforcement action. But if the, if the board is inclined to permit non-resident or non, non-owner shooting, then it has to be severely limited, so that this use does not continue to be unreasonable, excessive use of the property. So, if the board is inclined to, to permit guest shooting, then it has to be clearly unrelated to any commercial aspect, any customers, prior customers, any training, any instruction, has to be clearly limited. And it has to be limited in, in time and, and quantity. I mean, it can't be, you know, his friends could come by all day long and, and shoot, and then we're in the same problem, and that's, that's not a reasonable customary use. So, under your analysis, your, your example, the guy down the street can't invite people all day long, he has to do it reasonably and responsibly. So, if the board's inclined to permit guest shooting, it has to be limited, significantly limited, so that it's not a reasonable-
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just have a few things to say. We do have a neighbor down the road that does shoot on land as well, just similar to ours. Also, we, as-
The reference to me?
Okay, you want to-
Just so that it's-
Okay, sorry. We also do have, we do not shoot at all hours at night. You do have to stop in and ask someone. So, I just want to clarify that, I mean, I don't let people shoot at night as well. But I have a question. If, it's only limited to 251 and 241 Laurel Street, so just family on that aspect, are you going to say that now my other family, like my cousin who lives in town as well, who's a United States Marine, cannot come shoot on the land? Is that commercial? Like, that's where I'm getting confused. So, I was just, I mean, are we limiting just that part of my family, and we can't let the other side? Or, I, I don't know. That's my question.
Are you going to answer her question? If you answer her question, that would be amazing.
No, I have a comment. When she's done, I just-
You can now talk, she's done.
March 17th, 2016, a letter delivered to the town clerk's office with all the affidavits by attorney briefs, and it's not a personal attack on him, believe me, I'm quoting what he says. On page two of his letter, signed by David Beens, not an affidavit, it says, "More importantly, use of the subject property in the current manner as a large-scale gun range slash gun club of the type operated on the property has never been in a permitted accessory use." And then he quotes one of the cases that, of course, was a commercial use. Our, our package, part two, which is my, my colleague Susan Chu's memorandum, has exhibits A through G attached to what, okay, that's A through G, and A through F, I'm sorry. I'm always looking for G's, and I shouldn't, probably because my name is George. So, part, uh, part two, her memo, has A through F attached, and exhibit C, our pictures taken in, in, either July or August, maybe it was September, I can't remember which, but it was this year, this last year, 2015, by me, at that range. There's two photos, two color photos. Please notice the size of the backstop, the firing range is this picnic table here. That's not a large-scale gun club or gun range. That's a little backyard range. And the reality is, if I could just, the one point I wanted to make, none of the affidavits submitted by Brother Counsel substantiates the claim he makes on page two of his letter that it's a large-scale gun range club. It's just attorney testimony. When I look at that kind of allegation, I'm looking for some demographic study, some survey done by a professional, not a bunch of people filing affidavits saying, I don't like to hear the shootings, because I just came from New York, and, you know, it reminds me of drug busts and stuff, okay? When an attorney and his client make this kind of claim, they need to do something more than just file affidavits by people saying they're afraid of gunfire. And I don't doubt some of them are afraid of gunfire, but they have no evidence that it comes to the extent they say, they hear this bullet, they hear that bullet, blah, 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 they hear machine guns. Does it come from the police firing range? By the way, I'm old enough to remember, police used to shoot little six-shot revolvers. They don't anymore. They don't. They shoot semi-automatic, large magazines, magazines that are not allowed to civilians. No civilian can shoot a, a semi-auto with more than 10-round magazine. Police, okay, some departments, I don't know if this one is, are required by Homeland Security to get out there and practice with fully automatic weapons, and they'll lose more rounds in 15 minutes than are shot in this range a month. And it's right next door to Mr. Alstrom's range. But there's no evidence here. There's just supposition, allegation, and as to the commercial use, it's guilt by association. They have no evidence. They have no evidence. There's no affidavit saying, yeah, I went into Wayne's gun shop and bought ammo, and he told me if I bought ammo, I could go shoot on his range. Not one person has put something under oath and said that to you. Not one.
The, the large-scale gun use, the evidence of that is the 25 affidavits that we've submitted, people talking about gunfire from eight hours a day, all day long. And the evidence is the police records, the 155 complaints. These are public records, they're kept in the ordinary course of the business by the West Boylston Police Department. Every one of those records refers to Mr. Alstrom's property, and that's evidence of the complaints as they're made. And I referenced a number of them earlier that talked about the armored truck training, the police training, the customer shooting a shotgun, that's evidence. The large-scale gun, it's, it's, I don't know what he characterized the, the volume of use here, but there's no evidence by Mr. Alstrom. How many people, I'd like to hear from Wayne, how many people come out and shoot over the course of a year? It's, we're talking about hundreds of people. If that's not a large-scale use of the property, I don't know what is.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question. In the petition, it says that, that the following weapons be prohibited by non-owners of the property, it goes into specifics. Do you have any proof that these weapons are actually being fired on that range?
There are, and first, that list came from the prior building inspector during the process of trying to work out a resolution. That was a category of weapons that the building inspector deemed to be problematic, and that, that's where that list came from. But there are references in the, in the police records, there are references to certain 50-caliber weapons and exploding targets and other, other specific, I think a couple of references to machine gunfire, automatic fire, they're in the police records. And then the affidavit, the affidavit testimony talks about the automatic fire, the semi-automatic fire. And it's unclear exactly what, what caliber it is, but based on where the folks live, you know, it's a pretty high caliber if it's, if it's causing that kind of disturbance, you know, throughout the town.
Mr. George?
Yes, sir.
In speaking to your client in Florida, was anything ever asked about the type of weapons that are actually being shot on his, at the range?
Yes, he indicated, and it's in his affidavit, that from the very start, they have shot not only 22s, sir, but also standard, and we list some of them, 30-OT6, 308 rifles. Those are center-fire, high-powered rifle calibers. 45 pistols, 38 pistols, 9mm pistols. Those guns are the standard guns that are shot there. AR-15s, but they're semi-automatic, 223, okay? Those guns have been fired there since he started shooting. The 38-caliber Smith &amp; Wesson, the 45, 45 ACP's been around since World War I. 38 Smith &amp; Wessons, the standard, was for decades, decades, the standard police caliber. 30-OT6, it's a standard rifle caliber from World War II. And incidentally, the standard target rifle, high-power target rifle, is a, is a, is a variation, not by caliber, but by stock configuration and scopes and stuff, of the standard World War II Springfield bolt-action rifle, or the standard M1 World War II 30-OT6 rifle, or the standard Vietnam-era AR-15 223. The only difference is they're not automatics. Civilians can't have automatics, and they don't shoot automatics. But those are the guns that have been shot. Are there AR-15s being shot now, more than 30-OT6 M1 rifles and, and Springfield rifles across the country? Absolutely. Because the civilian use in target shooting follows the standard infantryman's rifle. It's been true since World War I, okay? He clearly says in his affidavit, that's what we shoot, that's what we've always shot. Now, as far as their prayer for getting rid of, again, back to September, client agreed, no more exploding targets, not going to allow anybody shooting exploding targets, or, I don't know what a binary target is, maybe it's taterite or something, okay?
I don't know what a binary target is.
But, you know, you don't have to worry about saying there's no more exploding targets. We've agreed not to shoot exploding targets. Done a lot of things to try to come, you know, and meet these folks. But again, I submit to you what they want, and if you read those affidavits, those are a lot of people who just don't like guns and don't like shooting. And I submit that to you. That's my opinion. I will state it as my opinion. I haven't, you know, taken their depositions, but I think it's true.
Are there two, are there two shooting ranges on 251 Laurel?
No, there's not 251. There's no, there's not two shooting ranges. I think he used to have a pistol range.
Okay, because on this-
On 241, there's one shooting range. They also have, I don't know if you've ever been skeet or trap shooting, but when you shoot a rifle or a pistol, you're shooting at a stationary target, okay, in a specific location. They also have, for years, shot trap, I think, which is a form of skeet, which is shooting at a clay target with a shotgun. You could say that's a second range, it's always been a second range, but that use has gone on just as long as the rifle and pistol shooting at 241.
Because on this here, it says, this is Wayne's weaponry, it gives, you know, where it's located, the hours, like you stated, and then it says, there are two shooting ranges available. One is located in the back of the shop, and one is on the side of the shop. So, I'm just kind of confused.
He, he may have had a test range there. I don't, I am not aware that there is one there at this point.
Kelly, do you know? Since you've lived there all your life.
Yeah, yeah, there is.
There are?
Yes.
Are they, are they used?
Yeah, not, not to the extent that they make them seem used, honestly.
What purpose are they used for?
I mean, I, I use it to shoot, like, to practice my pistol. Like, I just got my LTC, so I practice, just so I can, you know.
So, basically, so basically, on the two pieces of property, there's three shooting ranges?
No, no.
So, hold on. Kelly's the only one allowed. I know that you're probably with Kelly, but she's at the table.
Well, then let me go back to, to Mr. George.
Yep.
Okay, let me go back to Mr. George. Okay, she just said that there are two shooting ranges on 251, okay?
If he has practice range, or ranges that he uses to test guns himself, I believe he told me he's done that. I do not believe there is a range that's used by the public on 251. That's the best information that I have.
Okay, alright.
Are these-
The whole issue has, those are both pictures of 241.
So, in some of these, it references sand, a sand pit or a sand wall as of a prior meeting. So, this, there's no sand here, so these varies the other range.
That backstop in the distance, that backstop in the distance is probably what they're talking about, is the sand backstop.
So, I'm going to ask, I'm going to refer, give me one moment, because I want to see there, the minutes from- there the minutes from the meeting we had where it was mentioned. If you ask it of the two lawyers' places. Charlie, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
I live on Maple Street. I live a mile down from the jail. And they have a shooting range up there. And they fire away sometimes for half an hour, half an hour, but it doesn't seem to bother me. And I was wondering if, Officer Dugan, did you ever get any complaints from Maple Street of the shooting range up at the jail?
So, so he's not, he's not here to answer questions?
Oh, no?
No.
Well, I thought he was.
No, I, he's, he's just, he looks good in the back of the room next to the blue. He's not, he's not at liberty to answer questions in this, sorry. I get to tell you now.
Sir, the best of my, my answer I can give you is, this range is on 241, I know, because I was there, I took the pictures. It has a sand backstop. It looks a little, it's 100 yards away, so it looks little, but it is a sand backstop. It's where the targets are placed. There is, I don't know, maybe Kelly can tell me, I think, a sand pit over to the left where I think I was told they sometimes shoot trap, okay?
That's, that's what I think was referenced.
I don't know if that's true or not.
I know people used to shoot over there, but it was always off limits. But I mean, once, it's happened once in a while, but we've always told people, no, we always have them shoot straight, I mean, at the big bank. And in fact, I think three people shoot in the sand pit, and we've always, I mean, it's not a range if that's what you want to call it, it's not.
So Kelly, I'm going to direct this question to you, just because you're paying him. So, based on what?
Are you sure?
I'm, I don't know. Based on the testimony we're hearing, you've submitted two, this.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Wayne's site, his Facebook site, that's updated, and there's been a few posts stating he has two ranges. And now, we hear there's a sand pit where people may or may not be shooting. So to me...
I think his daughter and his wife used to go out on that, it's a sand excavation or something, and shoot trap. That, I was there with them, that's what they said. There was not, as far as I understood it, and still don't understand it to be, a public shooting range where anybody but the mother and the daughter, and maybe Wayne, went to shoot trap in the past. I believe that the two ranges he's talking about are ranges that he described to me as being test ranges associated with his gun shop. They're not, and have never been, as far as I know, open to the public, regardless of what it says in that thing. And I believe that the people who have petitioned this thing are not talking about the 22 or .38 pistol range behind the barn known as Wayne's weaponry. I don't think there's complaining about it. I don't think they hear anything from it. I don't think it's widely used. And I was told that's not where people go to shoot or are allowed to shoot. They, there's, before you get to this thing that's shown on these two photos, there's a winding, there's a gate, and then there's a winding road, and you have to drive up there. And that's what we all understood. Okay? Carolyn was there with me, okay? Was the range that's at issue. I can't answer any more questions about the post, because I didn't cross-examine about it.
Website.
Let's see.
As the profile picture, is this, are we saying this is not his and what he stated as a rec, sports and recreational area?
I'd have to go ask him. I didn't come prepared to answer that, because I didn't ask the client about it, okay, the other day. I was there.
Were these provided to them?
Yes.
Yeah, well, if they were provided to us, ma'am, they were provided in packets the size of a phone book last Wednesday, okay? I haven't had a chance to go through that whole thing. As a matter of fact, and honestly, I read most of their petition on the way out here with Susan driving, with this thing in my pocket. Because I haven't had the time, because they didn't give me the time, because they've known they're going to file this for months, and they didn't even acknowledge that we are.
I, that's what, that's, we're going to...
Maybe you only read one affidavit.
As the board, as the board knows, we agreed to continue this hearing, and then Mr. George insisted on going forward.
Not true. I was asked by counsel.
Hold on.
I was asked, you know, I can't take lies. I was asked by counsel to continue it. You can just make up so much stuff and throw it at me, ma'am.
That's, I'm going by the email that I received.
I'm not making up anything.
The email that I received. I can, I can pull the email out there.
Come, come, we're good. Do you have a non-hostile question?
Yes, I think it's time for road trip.
No.
I'd like to go see.
Not going anywhere.
Well, the thing, not now, but I think that it's important now, that we have to make a decision on these, on these, this here firing range. And I think, you know, a picture can only tell you so much. I think that in order to make a valid decision, at least in my opinion, for me, to make a decision, I would like to go see what exactly we're talking about.
Why does it matter if there's one or two ranges?
I want to go see what 241 looks like, and I want to see what's going on there.
I'm not saying that's improper. I just don't know why it matters if there's one range, two ranges, or 10 ranges. The issue is the conduct that's going on there, not the number of firing positions.
Fine, but I still, I'd still like this, I still would like to see 241.
It's fine, there's been a lot of talk about two ranges. I don't understand why the number is significant to us.
And I do. Because that's what we, because that's what we're here for.
Okay.
I'm not trying to evade your question, ma'am, I don't know the answer about that.
No, that's fine. So the reason the number of ranges matter to me is the amount of activity that can happen at a range, two ranges, three ranges, and the amount of people that would hold, family or non-family. So when I'm thinking of gauging something, people being on a property, I do read some of, I have read all of the complaints, and you got one packet, I received like 15. I'm trying to understand, there are a lot of people saying there's a lot of noise, that I'm hearing there's not a lot of people on the property. My question on the number of ranges are, the amount, is there one or two people at each range shooting? Is it Wayne, Kelly, her mom at a range, or multiple range shooting in different directions? I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the pictures that were submitted.
I've been there. I've seen this place. I met Wayne there in July, I think, I forget when I took the photos, like, it's 69, July, August, September, okay? Whatever those ranges are, they, I think there's, what I recall, okay, not being under oath, but it's my best recollection, there's little, there was a little incidental range behind the Wayne's weaponry thing where he told me that he tested guns sometimes. I don't believe that that is an active range that contains any number of people. I am happy to go back and ask him and submit to you further information about it, okay? I did not honestly think it was an issue. I don't think it has to be made an issue because of a website, because I, it may be the website is inaccurate and it may be nothing but puffery. I don't know. I have a gun shop with two ranges. I don't know. I don't know who put it up, I don't know who designed it, okay? But I didn't see any range that could hold any number of people. And by the way, when I saw it outdoors, would hold maybe three or four at that picnic table area because of the size of it, which was on 241. I'm happy to make a further submission to you about that.
All right. Thank you.
Is there an increase in usage of that range from 1993 to now? If so, how much?
I don't think there's been any increase in usage. I think especially since, I think especially since...
All right, you guys did a great job for so long.
I think especially since September, when he cut back the hours to 6 o'clock, when he eliminated in May, in August, I think it was, the Sunday, oh, May of 2015, he eliminated all Sunday shooting, by his family included, at their request. And then, when we became involved in it, we prevailed on to cut back the hours of shooting from dusk until 6 o'clock, okay? I don't think there's been more shooting. He also has agreed in September, and as far as I'm aware, has abided by it, not to let other people, which he did before, conduct classes, albeit some of those people may have been paid for what they did. Wayne wasn't paid for it, I can say that, okay? But, so there's, there's no explosive targets, the time's been cut back from dusk to 6 o'clock. There's no Sunday shooting, okay? He agreed to all those things. So I think there's less shooting there. Yes, I do.
Do you think it's the same level of shooting what happened in 1993 now? Before September or now?
From what my client tells me, yes, sir.
If it is?
Yes. I think that shooting has become more popular as time has evolved and as the areas where people can shoot has, I mean, it's a general statement, as, as people have lose, lost places where they can shoot, finding a place to shoot has become more critical for people. So...
That means increase in number of people.
I don't know that that's true at this range.
I would just add that, there's no basis for that, this is just supposition on Attorney George's part. But the review on the affidavits, which are folks who've been living there for a long time, and despite what Attorney George said, the people that, a number of the petitioners and other folks who are supporting the petitioners are longtime residents of this town. Mr. Blod has been here since 99, there's some, they've been here 30, 20, 40 years. These aren't people who just moved to town and they're, you know, moved next door and they're complaining about, about the uses. Dr. Davis and his wife have been in town since 91, The Walls, Rich Wall, 1983, Patrick McGrail, petitioner, his wife grew up here, they have the second generation of people here. Dr. Sullivan has been here since 78, The Gillies, who submitted affidavits, 1970, Lori Burns and her husband, 2002, The Kershaws, who submitted affidavits, 1985, Linda, I think it's Linda Isgro, who's a former member of your board, 40-year resident, and Amy Connors, 23 years. So these are people who are longtime residents. These aren't people who just moved here and are complaining about the gunfire. And the police records tell you that the use has increased. If you look, there's a handful of complaints in the early 90s and throughout the early 2000s, and then after the early 2000s, you see an increase in the frequency of the complaints and the type of use. And then in the last couple of years, there's been a dramatic number of complaints. So I think that, that indicates that they answered that question.
I do want a chance, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to ask questions, but I kind of want to open it up to public comments. Do you feel comfortable?
Yes, go ahead.
Could I ask that, if the folks who speak, just so there's equal time, that we alternate between folks who are, I know we have limited time, but folks who are supporting Mr. Armstrong and folks who are supporting the petitioners, just, I know we have a limited amount of time, and I want to make sure...
Would you like me to have the people in this room and downstairs stand up and raise their hand on who they're supporting, and then, one by one, select them?
I mean, we have a handful of folks who wanted to speak, and I can certainly ask that those people be allowed to speak for a moment?
Well, what I'm going to do first is I have a letter that was sent to us that they have requested it be read at this hearing. So I'm going to have Mr. Femia read that for me, then...
Read this entire letter?
No, I'm going to ask him to read just... Actually, I, what was his name?
I need somebody to read it to me. Just on.
Robin Malaker?
And Sean Hackett.
Sean Hackett. Your letter is quite extensive and you sent to us. Do you want to provide us in a, maybe, one to two-minute summary of the letter? Or would you, and this will also be attached to...
We're fine with it, you just want to attach it. Sean had actually, there was something as well he wanted to add to that, and it's only a minute and a half. Can you do that?
I think summarize it a little bit, exactly what's written in that letter.
So can, can you, you just take your name and your address? I'm sorry, I'm going to have you stay there, there's just not a lot of room.
My name is Sean Hackett, 11 Hosmer Street. And I just, 13 years ago, my wife and I purchased our forever home at 11 Hosmer Street with the intent to raise our kids here and educate them in our school system. One year before we moved here, I was diagnosed with a rare form of musculoskeletal dystrophy. The disease is so rare that at the time of my diagnosis, only one other person in the country had been diagnosed with the same disease. Based on my diagnosis, I should have been a quadriplegic, confined to a nursing home five years ago. With that being said, you cannot even imagine the highs and lows, tears and joy and love that we have experienced at 11 Hosmer Street. My home and my family have been my constant. My home and my family have been my sanctuary. As a property owner in this town and a taxpayer, I expect to be able to choose how I live in my home, rather than have this decision made for me by gun enthusiasts from out of town that come to my neighbor's house to practice their shooting hobby, and by a neighbor who at the very least seems to be inconsiderate of those that share his neighborhood with him. I have very little control over my health, which is a constant stressor for me. But to have such little control over my home environment as I have had for the past few years is an unnecessary stressor. My hope is that this zoning board will understand that as a property owner in this town, I have the right to enjoy my home without a disturbance and constant gunfire and explosions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next, I'm going to be fair, oh, sorry.
We have our own statement that we received this morning. I would ask if maybe we could submit it to the board. It's only two sentences.
Okay, do you, do you have a name from the person?
It's from, yes, Eric Mensing.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just read it quickly. "To whom I may concern, my name is Eric Mensing. I am a, I have been a resident of Laurel Street since 1987. I am not now, nor have I ever been bothered by the shooting range at Wayne's weaponry. The distant pop sounds in the background have in no way ever affected my life or my family's ability to enjoy our yard. In the almost 30 years of living on Laurel Street, I found the Almsdrums to be pleasant and respectful neighbors."
Thank you very much. Yes?
Hi, Deborah Madison, 11 Hosmer Street, 405. I just have a question for counsel from Belgium, Dwyer.
Me?
The 150 police reports or police actions that were gathered, I just wanted to know if they were investigated and reported on, or if they were just calls and complaints that there were no results.
Thank you.
The records, they've been filed, so you're free to probably come to the town and peruse them, but they were investigated, and many of them specifically tie the complaints back to the property. They, I mentioned some earlier where the police came and they'd known as customers that were testing out weapons, or some people who were doing different activities. So the bulk of those records clearly tie the complaints back to the property. Some of the records say the police investigated, they weren't unable to determine where the disturbance came from, but it's pretty clear the address is on there, tied to that location.
I'm going to skip you just for a minute, though. Gentleman in black, and then the lady in the last row between the windows. You're next, and then you're in purple. And I'm not going in any order, I'm just looking at hands and trying to keep track of them.
Hey, Thomas Riley, 16 High Street, right around the corner from Hosmer, which is at the beginning of Laurel. I've been here since 2003, and I'm hearing some contradictory things in here, particularly the increase in activity down there. It's actually less over the past few years, not more. I don't know where these hundreds of people are that are going in and out of there, but I know Wayne, I'm friends with him. He allows me to shoot lawfully on his property. I've never purchased anything from him, never given him a dime, nor has he ever asked me for anything. I just want to state that. And gunfire doesn't bother me at all. It's just, it doesn't go on for eight hours a day. You don't hear all these loud explosions and so on and so forth, so, that's all.
Thank you very much. Mrs., her and you.
Senator, 176 Malton Street, and I'd like to ask you, sir, are you home during the day?
So hold on, let, just restate, nope, nope, nope. So we're not going to do the interaction in the crowd, just because it'll be bad.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sue, can you restate your name and address for Toby?
Senator, 176 Malton Street. First of all, I've lived in town for since the 60s, and gunfire has increased. I know Wayne and Mary Armstrong, they are great people. I'm not here to personally assault them. I'm a Second Amendment person, so Mr. Attorney George, not everybody that is opposed to you and the firing range is anti-gun, because I am not. And this gentleman up on the, I forget your name, I'm sorry, up here. I just want to say to you, I have had a couple of parties at my house where the police have been called because it was so loud. So, you know, you can have your friends over, but if the, if you are too loud... So, you know, you can have your friends over, but if the, if you are too loud, you get, you have, you know, you get the police call. And I want to read something from the NRA council that said, the NRA's General Counsel says that no person is absolutely free to perform acts that others find offensive or interfere with others' rights to safety and the quiet enjoyment of their own property. And that's what this is all about, the quiet enjoyment of our property. I actually have a tape here, if you would like to hear what we have to listen to all the time. And this is without the explosions. So anybody that lives in, I actually did a couple of maps of the high zones and the low zones. I live on Malden Street, it's far from it, but I hear it. And I hear it every day. Well, I had heard it every day, still they, they stopped on the Sundays, but it is really, really annoying. If anybody would like to hear it, I have it here for you.
Wait, 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 I don't. So technically, we cannot hear it because I was not there when it was recorded. And it could have been recorded anywhere. I know that is not agreeable with anyone, but I could show up at your house and swear that I saw something.
Wait, you can tell us my house. Okay, I understand. The second thing I want to say is that I am a real estate broker. Gun ranges do affect property values. And I have, I have some information here and, you know, I can go over it, but it'd probably take too long. So what I will tell you is it does diminish property values. It takes longer to sell houses. We actually know one case right in Pine Garden, and I won't put anyone on the spot, but where a potential buyer looked at a house and all they could hear is gunshots and walked away from the house, they said, does this go on all the time? And it does, and walked away from the house. So I did a couple of quick calculations on a primary zone being Oakdale and a secondary zone being where I live, just based on the taxes. Some of the, some of these people have actually lost about 30% of their property values based on gun ranges. And if you take the primary zone, and I just do it with taxes, and it's just, by the way, rough estimates, I didn't have them to change because I didn't have time. If you take the $777,713 which we generate in taxes from the primary zone, which is right around Laurel Street, Almanack Lisa, and you deduct it by 10%, that's a loss of $77,071. By 5%, $38,000. My neighborhood, you're looking at $71,000, this is just 10% now, a 10% loss. And 5% is $35,000. My point being that if everybody started filing for abatements due to the nuisance, we'd have some trouble in town here. The last but not least thing I want to point out is the Mass Association of Royalty of which I am a member of, their legal counsel, because I, I called them on this because I said, I disclose this. You know, sometimes I don't need to because when I'm showing a house, it's so loud, who can hear it? I can just say, here, it's obvious. But it does need to be disclosed, which again is going to be a detriment to property value. So I just want to let you know that. But it has increased, Attorney George, I can attest to that, it's been here since the 60s. Wish you could hear this tape.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen in the purple vest.
My name is John Sullivan and I live at 19 Townsend Drive. I moved in in 1978 and I love West Boylston. I was town moderator for 10 years here. In 1978, I didn't know that there was a gun range there and didn't even know it in 1980 or 85. In the last five or six years, it has gotten increasingly bad to the point where two, two, two and a half years ago, I went to visit Chief Minnick after talking to the town administrator to find out what was going on. And there is no question that the activity there increased markedly. There are times when I'm sitting out on the back porch in the summer where I think I'm in downtown Beirut, and that's not appropriate. And it's, it's really gotten out of hand. I live on Townsend Drive, that's probably a couple of miles the way the crow flies, but that shooting range is up on a hill. There's a big valley in between, lots of land. Most of it, by the way, is part of the Wachusett watershed where you can't hunt. So there isn't hunting going on in the water, in that watershed area. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to.
I like it, I really like when you're on it.
So the bottom line is that the noise is coming from Wayne's gun range. It's inappropriate, it's, you know, it wouldn't be a problem if it was just Wayne and his local friends and family, but this is way beyond. And it's, it's like anything, I think someone mentioned, if you have parties at your house and you're overly loud and the neighbors complain, the police come and appropriately discharge whoever's there. Well, this happens on a repeated basis now. And I know that Chief Minnick, there have been times when it's happened even after the sun has gone down. And Chief Minnick has said he sent officers up there because the understanding with Wayne is that this wouldn't happen after sundown. But it happens in the evenings, including on Sundays. Since September, there have been shootings there on Sunday, excuse me, there have been shootings there.
Tell me.
And it's not coming from hunters in the West Boylston watershed area. So it is coming from Wayne's weaponry. And I think it's reasonable that we have some, you know, compromise here where there is a regulation of the people who shoot there. It can't be in the numbers and the degree that it occurs now because it really interferes with daily life. And none of us in West Boylston want to have that going on.
Okay, so we got to go, oh, too many hands all at one time. You are next, then you, then you. And then everyone else, don't raise your hand until.
My name is Patrick McGreal, I live in the back of Rivington Drive. As the crow flies, it's 2,684 feet directly to one of Wayne's ranges. Now, I can assure you that what we're talking about here in terms of noise level is not just anecdotal. I'm not deaf, I'm a well-trained musician. And I can't sit in my backyard on a Saturday, and I have a beautiful backyard, which I've worked hard at. I can't sit out there and enjoy that. My quality of life in West Boylston has deteriorated to the point where I have strongly considered moving out of town. I can't. My father-in-law lives here, he's 92 years old, he's been here since the beginning of time. He invented fire, by the way. And this is where I choose to live. And that noise level is absolutely destroying the quality of life that my wife and my daughter and even my dog should be able to appreciate. So I, I implore you to take this extremely seriously. We're not just out randomly picking up signatures. These are people who are as concerned as we are, who don't even live as close as I do and who don't hear the sound the way that I do. And I, I encourage you to do something about this. Otherwise, you will have problems with people wanting to leave the town, property values going down, and the quality of life in West Boylston will not be what you want it to be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Hold on just a minute, so.
Kelly wanted to point out that she, she's home every day and be able to check in.
Kelly's mother. I know I'm skipping out of order. I don't know which. You did before want to say something, so I'm, I'm trying to go fair here. I just can't tell, no one's wearing a sign. Guessing you're, do you have a statement?
There has been no shooting.
Oh, name and address.
Sandra Samia, 251 Laurel Street.
Now you can, sorry.
There has been no shooting on Sundays at all since this started, whenever it was, last August, when my, or May or whenever it was, when my dad said that he's trying to be nice and say, okay, we're not going to shoot on Sundays, we won't shoot after 6:00. Nobody has come to him and said, hey, I'm having a backyard wedding or backyard barbecue on Saturday. Could you not shoot on Saturday? They, he would, he would do that. But nobody has come to him, nobody has come to any of us. And to say that there has absolutely been shooting on Sundays, yes, there has. Because I've sat in my porch over the past few months and there has been shooting on Sunday, but it's not coming from my house. It's not coming from 251 or 241. It's coming from either the sand pit next door or it's coming from the house over on Lake Road. It's not coming from our house. So people don't know where the shots are coming from. If you can sit here and say they are shooting on Sundays, it's definitely coming from Wayne's, then they have no idea where it's coming from. Because there's not, I'm home every Sunday. I work 50 hours a week, I am home on Sundays. It's the only day I have to be home to do housework, laundry, whatever else I have to do. There's nobody there shooting on Sundays.
Thank you. Now, I got to do. You're going to let her go? All right, you get to go. That was very nice of you, thank you.
My name is Jessica Frender. I live on 48 Rivington Drive. And I did prepare a speech, but I will say, I am new to town. I moved in in 2014. And I will say, I am the only one from my neighborhood that is up here. So this is not, everybody says it's new people that moved into town. It's not new people, I'm sorry. I'm just a little emotional, gets me upset. This affects me, I'm sorry. It affects my children. I have a three-year-old little boy that when, sorry. That gunfire starts constantly on Saturdays and goes, and goes, and goes. And it's scary. And yes, my aunt David was the one that did it. Sounds like we're in Beirut and we have gangs. That was me, because that's what it sounds like at my house. My son runs to his room scared. We moved here to, to, I'm sorry. We moved here to, to start what we thought was our forever home and raise our kids. And this is what we hear every single day. There, we do thank you for stopping on Sundays, that did stop. And we do hear it occasionally, and like she said, I can't say it's definitely from Wayne's and I do appreciate it. But Saturday mornings, 9:00 in the morning, I'm trying to sit outside and enjoy a cup of coffee. I can't. I can't walk through my neighborhood because on Saturdays, it literally sounds like you're getting shot at. It is scary. Come to my house, come to my neighborhood when they're shooting on Saturdays. It is scary. My kids will not play outside. I didn't move to West Boylston and unfortunately, we can't afford to move. We sunk every dime we had into this house. And unfortunately, we are stuck here until we get ourselves out of debt. I'm hoping and praying that it stops. It's just relentless, it doesn't stop. It sounds literally, come to Rivington Drive on a Saturday and you will see what we hear. It is scary. There's bombs that have exploded, that have shaken our house, my walls. And yes, my neighbor does have a bullet hole through her window. Can we say it came from Wayne's? Definitely, no, it's not. But there is a sand pit that is directly aligned with our neighborhood. And it is very scary. And it's just, we didn't choose this, when we moved here, no one told us. And if you look where the closest range is, it's not West Boylston, it's in Whisker. So people that say to us that you should have known that this was here, we have no way of knowing. It's not our fault and now we are living with the constant sound of guns. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I have two little kids, we can't afford to go on vacations. We are home every single weekend. And this, we have a pool and this is what we hear. We've had people leave parties, birthday parties, because of gun range on Saturday. We have to throw parties on Sundays if we want to do it. And it's just, it's not fair. He has the right to bear arms. I am not against guns, but I have the right to pursue my happiness and my property. And it's just.
Thank you very much. So I know, running up on 10, we have you and then you. But I also, there's, you're at the end of the line. There's also a room downstairs, so if any of those people who are watching this want to line up, we'll take a few more, because I want to make sure they're included in this. So, gentlemen.
Yes, my name's Rich Wall and I live at 18 Townsend Drive. And I moved into town in 1983. And the level of, of noise and gunshots has definitely increased in the last five to six years. And I kind of take it as an insult when someone says, well, it could be shooting from hunters. There is a marked difference between the two. In fact, what Sue said, the house next to mine was vacant for three years. A couple came to look at it. I happened to be outside at my truck and a couple came over to me and said, geez, we really like West Boylston. We like the town, this is a great neighborhood, can you tell us a little bit about the neighborhood? And then all of a sudden, machine gun, I got a, you know, I pay no attention to it. I continued to talk about the town, it happened again. And she says, does this happen all the time? And I said, to be honest with you, it happens a lot more than I like. And she walked away.
Thank you. So gentleman in the blue, you, well, well. So gentleman in the blue and then I'll give you a turn and then we'll go to you and then him.
Nathan Palumbo, 184 Malden Street.
I'm sorry, could you say?
Gent, for Toby.
Nathan Palumbo, 184 Malden Street.
Sorry, can I use that first?
As I was coming to this meeting, I was on the town website and you click on, you know, the zoning board and then you click on what does the town values stand for? There's a video on there. In the end, there's a person on the back porch with a cup of coffee. And over that, you hear a narrator say, West Boylston, come find tranquility and peace of mind here. I wish that's how it would look. I moved here eight years ago and first, a request from Wayne's counsel that we take back that we're left with gun nuts. I grew up in Pennsylvania, rural Pennsylvania. I got a 22 drive over when I was 14. My wife was in the Air Force, she deployed during that. We're now left with gun nuts. When I bought my house eight years ago, how do you know there was a range? Two years went by, I was like, this is what it's like in rural Pennsylvania. You hear a couple of shots, a couple hunters, somebody out cooking in their backyard. Last summer, it was unbelievable. Saturdays, nonstop, sunup to sundown, constant fire. My friends who came over, when I first moved here, no one ever signed. Now, anybody over, they say, what is that noise? How do you look at that? So I can honestly tell you and I swear on it, it has gotten way worse in the past five years. Thank you, sir. And I would do like that apology, please.
You want an apology from me?
Yes.
For what, sir?
For calling us left with gun nuts.
I didn't call anybody.
No.
Okay, apologize to yourself, I never said anything like that.
My name is George Ballotter, I live at 173 Malden Street with my husband, who'd been here since 1999. At my request, and the new organization Concerned Citizens of West Boylston, in early September, we asked the town to bring together people, and this is the, the, the meeting we're talking about now on September 30th. On September 30th, Mr. Wayne Armstrong specifically stated that though he may retire and stop the shot, that he would foresee that there would be no decrease in the number of shooters, all the noise, because it is his, I'm paraphrasing, it is his mission in life to allow as many gun enthusiasts as he wants to use his land because they don't have land to shoot. And that can be verified by Mr. Chris Lon, who was at that meeting, and other people who were at that meeting. Now I want to give you experiences of being on the gun range myself. I regularly just walk onto that range on Saturday. And more times than not, I count more than 12 people. And, and there are three shooting ranges, there are three shooting stages, you know, at the backstop. And there, some people are shooting, some people are not shooting. Many times, there is somebody walking in the background with the, the ear things and he seems to be like a fire marshal or something like that. The other thing I want to, and, and so it's obvious that instruction is going on. But I have been there on Saturday afternoons, because that's usually when I just, you just walk on. I mean, anybody can walk on. And at, at the, at the most, I've counted 25 people. Now, not all those people are shooting, but you can imagine, you know, just during that time, how much, ongoing, ongoing, louder and louder and louder. Now I want to talk about a sand pit. And you have aerial photography, you know, from, from the Massachusetts photographer or whatever. There is a sand pit that, that, that was constructed between 19, between 2005 and 2008, it appears. You know, we know that a tremendous amount of shooting goes on, went on in that sand pit. And then all of a sudden, when we start to really complain, a sign went up, do not trespass. No trespassing allowed. No trespassing allowed. If we were to examine the amount of lead in that sandpit, I think you would find out that there is a tremendous amount. And people who shoot there, who have calibrated their guns there, know what I'm talking about. And this has been going on for years. And when we moved in nineteen ninety-nine, we didn't hear a thing. I would say until about two thousand and nine, once in a while you would hear the pop, and that would be the hunters. But since around two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, I mean, it's gotten worse and worse and worse. We can't even have lunch outside. We, every dinner on our papado is disturbed during the summer. I mean, you cannot be from Mars to think that nothing's going well. It is absolutely ridiculous. And I know I'm emotional. I spent this past year, my first year of retirement, you know, on this project. And I do know what I'm talking about, and I have a lot more to say, just read our website. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong is not here by design, by design. They brought this now so that Mr. Bellotta could get up and make a speech, and he couldn't be contradicted about what happened at a settlement meeting. He's paraphrased Mr. Armstrong. He's not here to correct Mr. Bellotta, okay? It was a settlement meeting.
I, so I will state, Mr. Armstrong is not here to defend himself. I was not aware that Mr. Armstrong does go to Florida. I don't know his schedule.
I'm not talking about you, ma'am.
But, I don't, I can't tell you if he was or not, but I do understand that. And I would say I like to be very fair to people, so I would prefer he be here to speak for himself. So I will agree with you. Not that this was by design, though, because I actually put the agenda together. I didn't design that.
Surely it wasn't my design, Chairwoman?
Oh.
We didn't, we didn't schedule the hearing.
Nor was it their design to not tell us about it either.
Okay. You get to.
My name is Mary Ellen Davis. I submitted one of the affidavits, and I have been here for over twenty-five years. My family and myself, we live on Pineard and Drunk. And my contention is that Mr. George has spoken indeed to the severity and the widespread disruption that this range causes by his contention that there are innumerable complaints that have occurred from all over town. And I think you can see that, looking at the affidavits, looking at well over hundred signatures of individuals on petition who support the, our contention that this is truly disruptive for the community. Also, I think this is a very important point that Mr. George raised. He said, who's going to enforce all of this? And this is a problem when you start saying, well, should we let these Friends of Wayne's come over? Should we let this other group that's a Friend of Wayne come over? Because this has happened already. And Chris Lund said, it is not my job to police private property. I'm not going on to someone's private property. So you're left then with the issue, who is going to police this? If you leave it to the discretion of Mr. Armstrong to invite certain friends over and be self-limiting. That is not going to happen. Yes, you can enforce, yes, you can substantiate, if you limit to family, whether the family lives on the land, or whether the family lives off the land. But my contention would be, that would be enforceable. Also, I can concur with everyone who's talked here in terms of the fact that it has gotten tremendously more prevalent. The type of guns being fired over there are not your hunters' shotguns. They are machine gun fires. A number of us have used our cellphones on our own property to record the firing of the guns. It starts early morning. I remember the morning after the Paris attacks, I was appalled. I was awakened that morning to machine gun fire and exploding targets going on. And I'm sure a number of other people would concur with me there. What has not come up, and what should come up here, this is not just an annoyance. This is not a group of people saying, it's annoying us, that we can't have a barbecue, or we can't gather, or our children will not invite their friends over, which is true, because the friends don't want to sit there and listen to the gunfire. But this is a health issue. And the town is mandated to protect its citizens, to protect our health. You can look, and I submitted in my affidavit, you can look at the research. You can see that this is loud episodic stressful noise. In the literature, loud episodic stressful noise. It will exacerbate Mr. Hackett's condition, which I did not know about until he mentioned it. And most certainly in the literature, depresses the immune system. It is an uncontrollable stressor. It's not ambient background noise that we can hear from the highway. We have never complained about the highway noise. It is a background noise. It comes and goes, it's ambient. This is loud episodic uncontrollable. And that, that's the important word, it is an uncontrollable stressor. It causes psychological distress, it causes anxiety, it causes children to be afraid to play in their yard. I question, when I walk by the school and I hear it, and I think, I'm glad my kids are older now and are not there, and the teachers or the children do not have to make the call, is this active shooter, or is this Wayne's background noise? I also will speak to the fact that this affects the cardiovascular system. We have individuals in the neighborhood who wear Fitbits, and when the firing starts, their pulse rate goes up. My husband suffers from atrial fibrillation.
Oh, my God.
Some of you may have it. And when the firing starts, his heart goes into this irregular pattern. In addition, we have someone in the neighborhood who is a diabetic, who wears an insulin pump. And the minute she's outside and the firing starts, the insulin pump kicks in. So this is a health issue. This goes beyond any annoyance. This is jeopardizing the health of the community.
Thank you. Hold on, is there anyone out in the hallway that's lined up from downstairs? I'm going to go with no. So, I feel that there are a lot of people here that have a lot to say. I'm going to say that I do feel that we do need Wayne to respond, not to accusations, but to reply to some of these. I also feel that I was not at this previous meeting that occurred where there was an exchange and compromises trying to be made. But I, I think that it would be a good forum, based on what I've heard and the board has heard, to maybe revisit that. Because if there were compromises made at that point, what I'm, what I'm not hearing is anyone has gone to Wayne. I have read every single statement that was submitted. I, I got three of you, and your hands are going like crazy out here.
Rob Meliker, eleven Hosmer Street. I have been trying since the explosion started in twenty thirteen to get some help from the town. I've been a chief manager, I've been, most everyone here knows me in the town. I have tried. I met with a selectman weeks ago, and the first thing he said to me is, did you talk to Wayne? Really? So on Christmas Eve, after seven hours of this activity, and it finally stopped at four twenty. It started again at four forty with semi-automatics. I'm supposed to get in my car and drive up to someone who thinks this is absolutely acceptable? And explain to him that, gee, maybe at four forty, could you get the customer, or the stranger, or the friend, or the neighbor, or the the family to maybe cut it out on Christmas Eve? I have really hard time with that, Ms. Chairwoman. I just do. What am I supposed to say? Oh, guess what, here's what I'll say. My husband's one of forty-five people in this world that's been chosen to be in a drug trial for a drug that we were told could be a cure for what he has. Four years later, and twenty-five pills a day, it's not. And we found that out last September, where we go to NYU, constantly, for a drug trial. And we came home, and all we wanted to do was sit in our depth on that Labor Day weekend. And we didn't have the option. So I apologize that I did not go to Mr. Armstrong and tell him ahead of time that we were about to find out that these pills, that everything we banked our hopes on and our families' hopes on, weren't going to work for my husband. I'm sorry, but absolutely unacceptable. If I had a neighbor, if I was doing something wrong, do the police tell me to go over to my neighbor who's having a loud party? And go handle it myself? No. I'm sorry, Chairwoman, it's.
Chairwoman, I think we all asked tonight for the board to make a decision. I know that this puts you in an uncomfortable, unpopular place. It's not easy. It takes courage, it takes courage for me to be here today. We're obviously not looking to upset people and make people angry. We realize there's family relations. But this is not something that can be worked out by walking over and talking to Wayne. If that was true, these people here wouldn't be sitting here tonight, and Wayne would be sitting here. We're asking you, as the board, please make a decision, make a courageous decision, make a possibly unpopular decision. But make a decision for those of us that have invested our time to be here tonight and our preparation, please don't push this back on us to go walk over to Wayne's property and work it out with him. Please make a decision.
First, state your name and address for Toby.
Erin Plumbo, one eighty-four Malden Street.
Second, my suggestion is not all of you drive to Wayne's house, because first, we found out he's not there. So it wouldn't have helped you. So, so hold on. So what I will tell you is you will not shout out from those chairs at me. You will stand up with respect once you are called on. So I'm not suggesting that any of you drive over there. I also don't live on that property, so I cannot tell you what it sounds like. But I do hear that every one of you say you're a neighbor and you know everybody in your area. That is why I have asked. I also can tell you, the gentleman in question and his wife who owns the property are not here tonight. And just like I would do for any one of you in this room, I would not take away your right to speak up for yourself and not be present. That is unacceptable. No, we're done. That is unacceptable. So, there was an appeal filed. He is not available. He was made aware of this. But of no design of mine did I make it sure he wasn't here. But I would never allow something to happen where it would enable someone to actually speak for themselves. Because every one of you showed up tonight and got to speak for yourselves. So to ask that is inappropriate. Yes, sir.
Michael, there's a noise on the street, and I just want to say, Chairwoman, you did suggest that we go over to speak to Wayne when we're hearing that noise.
No. I simply asked for the record if anyone had, because it does not seem in any of the affidavits that I read that anyone has.
And your suggestion by asking that, assuming that?
Why shouldn't you not?
I'm asking if you have, if you have filed that many, if in that realm of everyone, forty-five neighbors, if anyone has actually ever said this. And it, it's a mood point at best, but I'm questioning it as a resident of the town, because if I was doing something to disturb my neighbor, actually, I know they would come over. But that is my question, my only question. I know you've been on the property. I got to give that gentleman there a second, well.
Could I answer your question for you, ma'am?
I just want to say, there are guns being fired, it's very loud, it's intimidating. We've been intimidated in other meetings by the other side. And so you're expecting us to go talk to Wayne when that's happening?
I respect that. So right now, no, I don't want you to go over there. I don't want you to do anything that's going to make you feel uncomfortable. I'm just a different breed, I would go over. But that's me, I'm not asking you to go over. At this point, I think we've hit that wall.
I applaud that, that's what you were saying, so thank you for that.
No, I don't want you to go there.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Could I, could I answer your question? Number three, number three in our packet is a letter we wrote, which I've referred to before. It's not an emotional statement. November thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. It followed a settlement meeting. At that settlement meeting, I was present, Carolyn Murray was there, Susan Chu was there, Mr. Armstrong was there. I didn't hear anybody threaten anyone. Mr. Bellotta was there. Miss, you know, Miss Burns was there. I heard no threats from anyone. If, frankly, I would challenge George Bellotta to say that Mr. Armstrong was in any way threatening. We wrote a letter, and we said, there's two, there's two blocks to our making any further settlement progress with you. One, we need to know that you represent a majority of those people who complain. And two, we need to know that the town, if we change the range, and that's not saying it's the only thing we would do. But if we change the range by moving the up-high hill where the shooting comes from down at the target, take the firing positions and move them down, okay? Carolyn Murray had that idea, okay? She's not a, I don't know if she's even a shooter. I talked to an engineer, and the engineer said, Paul Sterrett, he's a town engineer, one of the towns, he's a shooter. He said, yeah, if you get the firing lines down off of the hill, it will reduce the noise. Okay? Mr. Bellotta wanted to know, because I brought it up, he didn't, whether there was some way to, I brought it up in a settlement meeting, since he's opened the door to that. There are ways to attenuate the noise by building shooting structures, okay? Which are, I mean, I'm not going to go into all the details. All right? Nobody has answered the letter. So I'm just saying, ma'am, other than having people go talk to Wayne, the town has not followed up with this letter. I understand there's been a change of building enforcement officer. I understand that, I'm not critical of Chris Lund at all. But the neighbors never came back to us and said, okay, well, they're complaining, the Concerned Citizens of West Boylston. Here's who we are, here's a list of the people, so we could look at that list and look at the map and say, at least a predominance, a predominance of the people who live within a mile, okay, could possibly be represented, and we can talk. But there's been no response.
Okay. So we do need to close public, public comment. The gentleman right there, though, I do, oh, you've raised your hand a ton of times, so I've got to give this to you. So please stand. So after this gentleman, we're going to close public comment, because it could go on all night, and it will wind up in a circle thing, and then it doesn't look like, it's just going to agitate everyone more than it needs to be. So sir, please state your name for Toby and where you live.
My name is Timothy O'Brien, I live at three Rivington Drive in town here. I'm raising my hand a lot of times, each time the question was asked if someone's gone to Wayne. And I have, have. I went to see him after dusk, when rounds were fired, which I thought was terribly dangerous. I've called the police on several occasions. The standard of evidence that's required is very high. How do you prove something like this? How do you prove who's firing, where they're firing from? The standard of evidence is very high, but I'd like to make my comments, unlike some, under the pains and penalties of perjury. I've called the police after, and I have a military background, I did seven years. I know what different kinds of guns sound like. I have heard the fifty-caliber go off repeatedly. People sometimes have used the term that a gun was a machine gun. And what they're talking about is semi-auto weapons in this case. A shadow of defense can say that there's no machine guns. That's just vernacular, that's not substance. They admitted to firing fifty-caliber weapons. They admitted to exploding targets. The first time, when the police went, when I called them, they denied it. The second time, they admitted it. So that's on the record for anybody willing to read. I would say that I called the police app in August, and I was informed by a police officer that the Alstrem's had taken this issue to court and that they had won. And so my phone calls subsided, they didn't end, I can tell you that. But they subsided because I was instructed that they went to court and won. The only thing I would, I would ask you The only thing I would ask you to not consider is further delays. I've lived in West Boylston since 2005. I too was not informed of the range, looked at aerial photography, didn't know because it's not a legal range. And I would ask you, do anything besides postpone. Thank you.
Chairwoman?
No, just one second. Um...
I may talk to gun... But I just don't want to have a discussion of law rather than us go there.
No.
I just want to make a quick comment because that reminded me of something that I saw in the police records. And I think it was page 121 of the police records and then page 127. There were a number of references that were in response to the complaint. It said, it's legal for the property owner at 251 Laurel to use his range. And the police indicated that it was kind of a boilerplate response that were in a number of the entries. And two things. First, it's, you know, 241 is the range. So they're basically, the two properties are being, you know, put together, 251, 241. And then the other point was, at page 127, there's a reference. It says, the courts have already decided that it is legal for the property owners at 251 to use their gun range. I don't know where that came from, what courts that's referring to, but it looks like the police have misinformation about what's permitted and what's not permitted. So that probably is the reason that they've not done more to stop what's happened. So I don't know what the source of that was, but it appears that the police have been misinformed about, you know, the legality or court involvement, because there hasn't been any court involvement that has said this use is... Not that I'm aware of, that this use is permissible.
Can I have one final comment? I just said, we wrote a letter in November 2015 and invited the complaining citizens to come and talk to us. You said, has anybody asked Wayne? I miss counsel. The answer is no, they haven't. They've never come back. And I would have thought, having said that, having invited a settlement conference, that brother counsel would have seized on that. But I suggest to you again, brother counsel's comment indicates to me, they just want to close the range.
All right.
I didn't receive that letter. I don't know what letter he's talking about. But he can tell you.
So we're all, public comment's closed. In the back, and everyone raising their hand. You two, Linda, you are part of the public. Public comment's closed. Do you understand that?
Until next evening or...
No. Public comment for this evening is closed. So my question, who's running this shop currently? Are you running this?
The shop's not open though, so...
Is this range open?
We allow family to come and shoot. That's it right now.
Okay. Public comment's closed. I'm going to digest this all for just a moment. It's running late. And I'm starting to... So I'm going to ask you, what are your thoughts on... Do you have any outstanding questions? I see this paper you're writing.
I have no outstanding questions, no.
What are your thoughts on the hearing?
I think that the reading all of this, I do think there's a pretty significant, at least anecdotal, evidence that there is a connection between the amount or the quantity of use on the range is related to a commercial aspect, whether you call it a gun club, whether you call it related to the business. But it seems pretty clear that the amount of use is related to the business. Whether or not it's intentional or not, it does seem to be a connection to that. Holding, training sessions, people that are making purchases there, in some way or another, it appears that this is, there is a connection to the commercial business. So I think the... But at the same time, so I think that needs, there is a cease and desist letter that needs to stop. I think that that should be vigorously enforced. And if there are groups that are in any way commercial, whether or not money is changing hands, that needs to stop. If you're bringing in an armored car company and they're using this in some, you know, that's a commercial enterprise and they're using this. This isn't friends and family. So I do think that's inappropriate. I think it is in violation of the bylaws. I don't think it's consistent with this permit that was issued for the operation of the gun shop. But I also don't think that the shutting down of the range or some of the limitations that were proposed are appropriate at this time. I think that there should be enforcement and make sure that there is no commercial application and that the use of this range isn't connected with that, and that should be limited. But to say that this person, because they... And it seems pretty clear that whether intentionally or not, was erroneously connecting the business with the, what's being called a range, you know, that's terms being used loosely. That needs to stop. It needs to... If it hasn't stopped, and it's not clear to me that it has, it needs to stop. And that should be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer and to the extent appropriate by the police. But to then say, this has happened in the past and therefore the only remedy is to restrict this property owner in a manner that we are not restricting all property owners, I don't think is appropriate at this time. I think that is being punitive. I think it's treating this person desperately based on past activity. And I don't think we have reached the stage where it is appropriate to take one property owner and say, your right to use your property is going to be restricted in a way that similarly situated property owners in town would not be restricted. So until there is a... I think we should direct the, to the extent that it's within our power, direct the zoning enforcement officer to ensure that there is no associated commercial enterprise, whether it be test firing weapons that are built, manufactured, whatnot on there, whether it is people that are associated there. Certainly, the website suggests that the use of this range is somehow connected, saying I have two ranges and putting it on the website of a business certainly suggests that there is a commercial nexus here and that people are being encouraged to use the range because of this business. And that needs to stop. I think he needs to take that off of his website. I think he needs to make it clear that there is no association with this range and his business and not encourage people to come to his range because of the business and vice versa, not come to his business because of the range. And see where that leaves us with reducing the noise, the use of weapons on the property. But to, at this point, without having made the effort to enforce the cease and desist letter, I don't think it's appropriate to be restricting him in a way that other property owners wouldn't be restricted.
I hope that that's not the consensus of this. I know that's just Vice Chair Benson's take at this point. The commercial issue is a small slice of the problem here. And that issue's been decided by the building inspector. That's not, that's a fraction of the problem. The problem is the frequency of the use, the days, the volume of people. This board has to limit the volume of use at this property, the time of use, the number of people there. It has to do something to limit that. Otherwise, we've wasted everyone's time tonight. We've wasted all these people's time. All the effort here is essentially just been wasted, and the board's not addressing the real issue is this accessory use. Is the use of this property with this volume of people, with four, five, six people for hours and hours at a time, regardless if it's commercial, regardless if they're paying, is that an incidental accessory permissible use of the property? It's not. It's clearly not. And that needs to be stopped. And this board, I think, is, I implore the board to restrict, if it's not going to shut down the range completely, it needs to restrict the hours of operation, whether it's one hour a day or two. I don't know what's reasonable to... I don't know, how much time does Wayne and his family need to shoot on the property? How much time, you know, how many friends need to shoot on the property? How frequently does it need to be used? I think this board needs to impose restrictions, and we've proposed some restrictions that I think are reasonable if the board's not inclined to completely shut down the...
Equal times. And I don't need anywhere near as long because I've heard all this, okay, five times. We invite you, okay, when my client's back here, to follow your thought and have a conference as we invited everybody back in November of 2015. And there are a lot of things that can be done, I believe, to alleviate the problem.
Entertaining that thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you also entertain the thought until your client is back and we can have him here, that there's no shooting on the property until he comes back?
I do not make that decision on not the client.
But I'm asking you, if you want me to entertain something, I'm asking you for a little bit. So it's, I don't know, he's back in April. We've got a few...
Next week.
A week. We have a week. So I have to come...
Do you want me to go back and say to him that the board would like him not to shoot until Wayne?
I would say, I am, if, I want to make sure this is fair for everyone. So I understand the airport, they all came. They're all looking for something. But I also understand the point where he needs to be here. I'm asking for a compromise. If, say, the board was to say, we will agree to hold off on a decision until Wayne returns in that timeframe...
Just technically, ma'am, until April 1st, he comes back on April 1st.
Oh. So until the next CBA meeting, which is in April, so it's not very long, will, for the short, near couple of weeks, I'm not asking you for six months, I'm not going to postpone it, trust me, we're all going to be back in this room. I do it every month.
You have to give me, ma'am, that, Chairwoman, you have to give me a date.
Okay.
April 1st doesn't work. He comes back on April 1st.
April 21st. Will you give me...
I'll ask him. I can't, I'm not authorized. I'm an attorney. I'm not a client. Some people in this...
All right, so hold on a second. I'm going to...
They don't recognize the fact that I...
Why don't you, why don't, I imagine he's sitting on the edge of his seat. So why don't I give five minutes as a recess period for you to contact your... And see if those...
No, I'm not going to do that tonight, ma'am. I'm not going to do that tonight. It's 10:30. He's sixty-nine.
They are calling. They are calling. It's called five minutes.
We're going to call, we're going to call five-minute recess. Everyone's, we have a recess for five minutes. Everyone stand up and walk around, be nice to each other. I'm not going to walk around the hallway. So you be nice, okay? Don't bother. You be nice, okay, don't bother. All right, so in an effort to move this along very quickly, I am going to propose something until our April 21st meeting, when Wayne is present. What I'm proposing is Monday through Friday from four to six p.m., only family will shoot on the property till April 21st. On Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., only family will shoot on the property. During this period of time, because it has been said that there is possibilities of gunshots being in different areas or coming from different locations during this period of time, I'm not seeing him, asking our building inspector... No? He's standing in the doorway.
Nobody else in the way?
No? I personally, our new zoning enforcement officer, welcome to West Boylston, during Monday through Friday from four to six p.m., and Saturday from 11:00, 3:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and no Saturdays, until April, or April, no Sundays, no Sundays, sorry. Let's start over, from Monday to Friday from four to six p.m., from Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and no Sundays, till April 21st, when Wayne is back and we have a ZBA meeting, that gun activity on the property be limited to family. And during that time, our building inspector, who's new, and now you'll find out where this is, during that time, if there's a complaint or loud activity, it would also give us the ability to find out if there are other activities of shooting in that area because we'll be present and we'll know the hours, along with the help from the family, to do that. That is only, the recommendation I am making as the chair is that the board vote on this decision and during that time, monitor the activity. I would ask all of you, if you hear the increased gunfire that you're hearing during those times, and it is not something that is conducive of four family members, or six, or whatever the, I don't know your family size, but I think you know what reasonable is. To me, it's four. Shooting on the property, you will contact our building inspector reasonably so that, well, I know, I don't want you running out there, but to see if it's coming maybe from a surrounding fiery range.
I have a question, I work 32 hours a week, who's going to pay the overtime?
So...
Is something going to happen about the settlement discussion between now and April 21st? Or are we just going to, it's not a facetious question, monitor the sound of gunfire?
You're going to monitor it for me, and then when Wayne gets...
No, no, I'm not, no, no.
No, but you're going to reduce it for me, and then when Wayne gets home on the first, the goal would be to have Wayne, maybe you, if you're available, George and your lawyer come together in a conversation about the gun range. And in that time, and I'm asking, I'm actually requiring this to happen, and in that time, and I'm happy to attend if you need someone to mediate that, come to what I feel is a reasonable expectation that we can coexist, that? Or then by the 21st, you come here and we will help make that decision? Did, no public comment, I know you haven't talked and I'm sorry. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to do this.
Wait a minute, can I make a comment?
No public comment.
I, I, I'm up with these, is it all right? Okay, why can't we include the police department in this? It's disturbing the peace. When you, when we hear gunshots, you're disturbing the peace. They should be able to go out and find out what the problem is. That's my only comment.
All right. Good one.
Hi. I just have a clarification. Could you repeat the Monday through Friday times you're proposing? Did you say two, two to six?
Four to six, yes.
Okay. And are you saying it's limited to four people? Because there's, there's already nine people that live in the property itself who are all related.
All right, I don't really have a family, so... All right, my meeting, you can all volunteer and run your own house.
No, they don't all shoot at the same time, they shoot together.
So you guys don't ever shoot at the same time? Am I being unreasonable by saying four people? I mean, like, half of the family goes shoot at the same time, is that unreasonable? Half, no, so no one in that family...
I would never say that we'd all shoot at the same time. I mean, we might be hanging out down there, but it's not like we all shoot nine guns at once, so no.
No, so I'm not being unreasonable?
Okay, I just want to clarify, yeah.
It's relevant to your motion.
Okay.
Should you, Winthrop Candy, 53 Central Street, on the quiet days, could someone use a decibel meter to monitor the silence? And have a, something that's irrelevant, anyway, move on.
All right, no, no, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion on the request. I have the motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do I?
It's not up to you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So passed. The motion is, with cooperation, Monday through Friday from four to six p.m., family members, or, you were fine, everyone seems to be shaking their heads, Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., no Sundays, from this meeting till April 21st. In that period of time, please contact the building inspector. And...
Please, on the side, please.
Everyone has an email, you don't just email me and I'll just... So, and we will then, before that meeting, come together and work together for a compromise. And if we can't do that, and I will be present for that, if we can't do that, we're going to come back here on the 21st and we're gonna, we're gonna have another sit-down conversation.
Point of reference, where are we going to have this meeting here?
I think we bought this town hall, so we should probably do it here. Okay, does this work? No, you want to do it in Boston?
No, no, I'm not a fan of Boston, actually.
Okay.
I grew up in, definitely, I'm Connecticut, I'm not a fan of Boston. But what time are we going to do it?
Well, I'm gonna wait till the plane lands and her grandfather is available.
You know, what I mean is, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic. I want to know, is it going to be during the day or at night?
No, I, I actually have a job, like, during the daytime.
Could we do it?
I do this for fun.
I, I understand, could we do it earlier than 7:45, that's all.
What time would you like, sir?
Five o'clock, six o'clock.
For you, is that, I don't know, you're retired, you said you...
Yeah, we're flexible.
Okay, so, let's, five.
Five, thank you.
And I'll just figure that out, okay. This meeting is, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a one...
Welcome.